Let's begin by our Pledge of Allegiance. Join me, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we do have a question from a citizen this morning.
So can we say a couple introductory remarks first?
Sure.
Are you, or are we doing public comments?
I do have a public comment here, which of course I was given on a blue piece of paper. Perhaps you guys can address the answer to this. Would you please tell me what the county is doing now about increasing the capacity for hospital beds so that we may be prepared when a crisis hits us? And this question is from a resident of Deschutes County. It's Marita Marks.
Can we get to that when we get into the specifics of the agenda?
Well, this was her citizen input. This is normally when we do citizen.
Okay, well, we usually don't comment on citizen input. I mean, we don't use other witnesses.
Okay, so remember this. We need to answer this question.
We have some other questions, too, that are kind of a serious. I just think, and I'd like to say a couple introductory comments because it's a public meeting. So first of all, I wanted to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Devon.
Hi. So I think it was two and a half weeks ago that we stood up the information office on a Monday night. Two and a half weeks later, we're still in Deschutes County, have, I think, 10 confirmed cases, if that's true. I wanted to clarify a little bit about why, as a commission, we continue to meet. Because there may, we're getting emails commenting on what everybody's doing, whether the golf courses are open, whether we should, people are burning in their backyard, everything. And I think people are thinking about whether we should be meeting, and is that a violation of a state? Or, you know, the state's, the governor's order, executive order. And I think what, three things people need to know, at least from my perspective, and the other commissioners can join in. One is, we're paid by the county as commissioners to go about our business. Our business can only be conducted as commissioners in a public meeting because there's a law that says the three commissioners can't all just get together outside a public meeting. So the only way we can converse between us, really, about public policy is this way. And that's true of the city of Ben. They can't, four of them cannot meet except in a meeting. They can meet in smaller groups. But there's every, for any time two or more of us are meeting, it's a public meeting. So this is the only way that we can do the job we're paid to do, is meet. Now, we may go to completely remote meetings, but we're trying to follow the rules about distance. And we're keeping, one of our commissioners stayed home today. He's on the phone. But, so that's one reason we're continuing to meet. The second is that Deschutes County, other, different than Parks and Rec Department, or the Ben City Council, or whatever, we're the public health authority for Deschutes County. The county itself is the public health authority. So that, so we have a different responsibility. We have, and as we've seen in our meetings, we have a lot of input on health issues with our extensive health department and interactions with them. So we have a different role in the community than a lot of other public agencies. So I just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if people are watching, but sometimes news is also reported on. And those are just some important things. The other thing that I think, the reason I bring up that two and a half weeks ago, we started getting ready, and at this point, we've had 10 cases in the, in the community. I worry about the sense of panic that's being instilled by some of the people about, and it's easy to take a fear and run with it. And so we're 10 cases in that we know about, and there may be more, and we're trying to accelerate. But we're not wanting to panic everyone that this isn't Northern Italy yet. We're trying to avoid becoming those things. So we are working a lot of things, and those are what come out. But this is a different kind of, as everyone perceives, that a different kind of, and scope of emergency from normal business for all of us. What, you know, we're, we've dealt with forest fires. We've dealt with snowstorms. We, there's certain things we've dealt with as emergencies locally. But we really haven't had this kind of disease-related, you know, epidemic, pandemic. And so we're, we have people luckily, like Dr. Conway, that are very experienced with this kind of thing in other parts of the country, and our new public health director that are. But this is a different kind of thing. So I'm just getting it out there, why, to me, I feel like we're, we sometimes are not as clear what we're doing. Two things I wanted to address people to, or one is, our website on Deschutes County is very good. It has a lot of help on a lot of things, and we'll probably talk more about that. The other thing is just our role of trying to be involved with what the state and the federal government are doing, and we'll continue to do that. So I just want to say those things.
Commissioner, I just want to make a comment about your statements there. Spot on, well said. I think this commission's leadership has been obvious the entire time, and that summed it up. And I completely concur.
Thank you, Sheriff Nelson, for those words. Your personal assessment. I know you're concerned about locking our doors, and we do have our report from all our different departments today, which has been prepared for us. And it, you know, it's clear that we will be, you know, after we vote, because of course we always must vote on the decision the three of us choose. But yes, it's clear that we will have to start, you know, we'll lock our doors. But I, too, worry about panic in our community. And when I drove down Wall Street last night and saw two cars on Wall Street, I feel so deeply for the businesses of our community all over, you know, Deschutes County. It's, it's going to be a serious impact. And tomorrow, when we hear, you know, the, the numbers of people that have filed for unemployment, you know, is that going to be 4 million, I mean, for our nation? It's, it's going to be incredibly impactful. I do want to point out that Italy's numbers have gone down for four days now, four days in a row. So hopefully, that is a positive trend for Italy. They were one of the first countries that were infected with China, Italy, and Iran. So, and you know, that was because of the design and the work, and, you know, was the truth really coming out of China? Probably not. But it is good. And we did find out that our residents in Deschutes County that are positive, we've only had 112 tests per the OHA, but of those tests, 10 have been positive. And I ask for feedback and thank you, Dr. Conway, for your department. The majority of them are women over 60, and they've traveled. And the majority are not in the hospital. So that's all, you know, at least we know, you know, traveling is cut back. And yet, you know, hearing from the pharmacist that my family uses in Sisters, a lot of people from Portland have moved over to their homes in Deschutes County. So that's something to be aware of. You know, we've heard about people, you know, with Washington license plates driving around Deschutes County. Even our travel agency sent an email out yesterday saying, please, this is not the time to come to Deschutes County. Our mountains are going to be here in a couple of months, and we'd love to see you then. So it's, it's been, it's a trying time. And I feel like, as commissioners, we, we need to protect public health. There's a lot of rules about how you can, you know, stay in your house with your family. So you're going to get to be very dear friends with your family if you weren't before because that's what St. Charles is recommending, that you are only in your house with your family with no one else. So, and that's good, you know, cut out the amount of people that you are within a distance of. You just, you have to be very careful. So, and yes, you should be wearing gloves, right, Commissioner Henderson? So he's got his gloves on, and mine are in my purse. So this is good. And anyway, I just think that we don't want people panicking. There will be serious implications after we get through this, with the financial implications. And we just, I want people to realize that there is a way forward. We will, we are Americans. We will get through this. You know, someone just invented a ventilator for $150. You know, American ingenuity is always to be admired, and now is the time for it. So let's hope with our, you know, more testing, we can actually get ahead of the curve and flatten it out. And it looks like, really, Oregon's testing still has been quite minimal. It's been only, I believe, 4,500 tests per OHA. But, you know, they really feel like, a lot of our state, people are panicked, but really, they are testing negative if they do qualify and do get the test. So that's, that's the good news. So please, practice your social distancing, and according to the state, please, we can still fish. And I think that's great.
I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Adair.
All right. Commissioner Devon, would you like to add anything?
Well, yeah, my thought is that we all basically just need to walk through this together. So there's, you know, we don't need to get too wound up. That social distancing, being able to keep some, you know, manufacturing, food, agricultural businesses all going, the ones that can go, just walking through this together as a community and a society is the best thing we can do right now. You know, focus on that social distancing, change the processes, procedures. I know we've had calls from people saying, if I'm a delivery person, what's the procedure for me? Because they're doing that interfacing on both sides. And those are some of the things we can be talking about. We are getting input from citizens like no other time, you know, regularly, people asking about specific, you know, public recreation facilities. So we're going to talk about that a little bit. But all citizens, just kind of walk slowly and take care of yourself right now, is my thought.
Thank you. So, Dr. Conway and Sergeant Garabee, who would like to go first? Want to, does it coin?
Well, I'd just start with some, since there were preparatory remarks, some that I felt I wanted to share. And I have to acknowledge Mr. Zodi helping sort of craft this perspective. So I think that.
Oh, do you want to, could you introduce him to?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Please.
Nahad Azodi is our new public health director for Deschutes County.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us early.
And so I think that, is a couple of things that are worth thinking about and reflecting on what Yol just said. One is that, just to recap things that everyone's heard, so we don't have vaccines, we don't have known effective treatments, and we don't have much testing. What that means is that we, not only are we not able to treat COVID-19 in other than supportive, medically supportive fashion, and good advice like hydration, et cetera, we don't even know the dimensions of the, of the problem. So the thing that we're trying to do right now is we're trying to buy time and stretch out the case rates so that they don't overwhelm available resources. And the biggest thing that will buy time is distance between people. And the second thing is hygiene. The other thing is that there's, of course, everyone's, there's, there's been a lot of public discussion in both the public forum and politically about the damage to the economy and trying to balance the impacts on the economy of such a catastrophic disturbance of basically shutting down an awful lot of enterprises. And I want to point out that in addition to the, the output of formal economic stimuli that the federal government is hopefully very close to finalizing today, there's some local synergies I think we should also be regarding as stimuli, economic stimuli. And that's, that's taking advantage of the synergies between needs. So for example, we have shut-ins, people that are ill and homeless, who, some of whom don't have housing. And we have hotels that have very recent vacancies. So there's a synergy there that the hotels need to maintain some, some way of sustaining their operations and hopefully keeping some of their staff employed. And we have people that need housing, and there's these vacancies. And another synergy would be that people need food, especially those same people and then people that were asking to self-quarantine, and the elderly, far beyond the scale of things like Meals on Wheels to date. And the, we have many recently greatly diminished prospects for business in things like restaurants and caterers. So having, blending those two so that some of those enterprises can stay afloat and alive at the same time that we're feeding people, I think, is a, is a good way to think about as both a mitigation and prevention measure for the health of the population, but is also going to be an economically mutually beneficial arrangement as well.
Thank you. No, and thank you, I heard you're, you're having, some of your deputies, sheriffs are going to be helping with Meals on Wheels delivery?
That's right.
That's a, that was, I thought, a really positive thing. It might kind of make me nervous if I saw a sheriff coming up to my door, but, you know, they'll, they'll be really happy.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No, very, you know, that's, you know, whatever we can all do to step up and help in this kind of a situation, I think is critical.
Well, and our plan is, because I know how you and Commissioner Devon think, I already visited with Commissioner Henderson, but the plan is to invite each of you to come out and deliver some meals with us. Commissioner Henderson's going to do it this week or next, and so we'll be asking you and Commissioner Devon to, to come join us as well.
And you leave it at the doorstep, correct?
Yeah, so we check on the homeowner. We want, we want to make sure they're doing well, and if they have any other needs.
Okay, great. Yes, I just learned that rule about don't let strange people into your house. So, okay, thank you so much. Thank you for doing that.
Well, and Sheriff, I'd be available, looking forward to that. In fact, yeah, contact me whenever, or we can work through the Council on Aging, Meals on Wheels. In fact, uh, yeah, contact me whenever or we can work through the Council on Aging Meals on Wheels program.
Thanks, Commissioner. We'll be reaching out to you. They're, they're actually, uh, heading to Southern Deschutes County today to, to deliver meals.
I just might be available after this meeting. So, uh, seriously, could have somebody contact me if they're available, if they can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Conway? Oh, did you want to address-
I'm happy to fill in other things, but I thought that, that Sergeant Garabee might want to say-
Right. What about addressing the capacity for the hospital beds? Did, did you have a-
Actually, that, that would be an appropriate thing for Sergeant Garabee.
Okay, I can cover that.
Perfect, thank you.
Find my notes here. Paper heavy here today. So first of all, I just wanted to thank you for having us here. And, and we appreciate the opportunity to interface with you and, and give you updates and hopefully answer your questions. Because ultimately, you know, you've asked how you can support us. And, and I witnessed it just a few minutes ago when I was visiting with Commissioner Henderson. And that is that advocacy to our delegations at the state and federal level and explaining, uh, maybe ground-truthing some of the claims that come down from, at different levels. And, and I think that explaining what they're being told at their level versus what we're actually receiving on the ground and that, I think that's incredibly important. Because I think that, that sometimes that disconnects. So I think your role is that conduit or that vehicle of information up that, and I don't like to use the word, but essentially that political chain of command, um, is critically important for us. Because, you know, I, we don't, that's not our role. Our role is to, to do based on, you know, the strategic guidance that, that the commissioners and the sheriff and Director Conway provide us. So, uh, thank you very much for that. I appreciate that advocacy and that communication that you, uh, you so, uh, that you help us with that's so desperately needed. So, um, first of all, I'm just going to kind of show you a general organization chart that we have. And, um, this essentially breaks down, so, you know, in the incident command structure, uh, you, you have a, what's called a Form 203. That basically names the people. It's, yeah, yep, exactly. So this is just-
Different people.
Yep. So those are the folks that are working within the Incident Management Team at the EOC, supporting a lot of different operations. And so we actually, this week have added, uh, well, we started last week, we added an, an entire new operations section because we were getting a little overwhelmed with, uh, at the operations level. So we added some depth there. We have, uh, Chief Doug Kelly is currently our, at this time, our operations chief working with hospital and first responder operations. And so his section's broken up in fire and EMS, law enforcement, health systems. Uh, and then, which includes not only St. Charles, but all the associated clinics and potential alternate care sites, um, around Deschutes County. And, and working very closely with our neighbors in Creek and Jefferson County because we share a lot of the same, well, obviously, we share the same hospital system. We share the same, uh, a lot of the same clinics. Um, they have sites in, in all of our counties. So we're, we're collaborating daily. In fact, every, every day I get on a call with the other two emergency managers from the other county. And we, we make, ensure that we're, uh, we're working in, in a cohesive manner and that we are rowing on the boat in the same direction. So, uh, and then our second operations section chief, which is, uh, staffed currently by Chris Wyler from Health Services, is really focusing on the, the public and behavioral health side, uh, which is obviously at this point with the impact to our communities of the stay-at-home order and the, and the, the social distancing needs that we certainly need to abide by. Um, obviously, there's some complexities in that that are incredibly complex. And so we have a, a large number of staff supporting, um, our unhoused, uh, population, our access and functional needs, which includes older adults as well as, um, other vulnerable populations. And then our public health side is those nurses and staff are working seven days a week, uh, working with, uh, contact tracing, uh, working with people that are either positive and/or, uh, displaying symptoms so that they can, uh, best, um, best protect the community. And then obviously, we have the finance and, and planning and logistics section that supports the whole, whole unit. So we've been working, uh, primary, our focus this week has been working with the hospital and the clinics and the surgery centers and other potential alternate care sites to develop what a medical surge plan is. Um, I think you were, you're all familiar or privy with the chart that St. Charles showed yesterday, which essentially shows, uh, you know, that peak of medical surge, both, uh, hospital admittance as well as ICU cases. And, you know, we recognize that if that peak happens, uh, the, you know, there were two, there were two curves, right? So the peak, if that happens, you know, seriously, we are seriously going to be under-resourced as a region. And so we're currently working with the state of Oregon, uh, on pursuing waivers to allow, um, lower acuity patients to be seen in alternate care sites, to allow EMS to transport directly, to, to decompress the hospital system and to, uh, to limit, um, potentially people that we don't want to go through the ER that might be able to be better served, uh, by a direct admit to another provider. So all of the clinics, in fact, I think, uh, they're about to meet today virtual, or now virtually, our, uh, our, our team is working with them, trying to nail down some of the specifics of that and the financial issues and the billing issues and, and all the little behind-the-scenes technicalities that we have to work through. So that's, that's being done. And then again, like I said, we're working with the state. We've requested waivers to allow us to utilize those sites. Uh, and then, obviously, uh, we are still trying to source additional protective equipment, uh, things like, and medical equipment to, to support the community need. And we're doing that in concert with St. Charles, uh, because they are the largest, you know, obviously, they are the hospital system. They are the ones that will provide the, the critical care for patients. And, uh, they are also, uh, looking at options to expand their workforce by partnering with other providers around the region.
You know where the, um, state actually changed the licensing for retired doctors? That they can come back in for, what is it, $50, um, if their license was current? So I, I'm, have they reached out then to the community?
Uh, I, I, um, I believe that that ask went out last week for, uh, people that could support-
That were retired, that could come back in?
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure. And so I want to be careful, but I believe that ask has gone out.
Dr. Conway?
The, um, Oregon Medical Board has sent a reminder to all licensed physicians to do outreach to, about this, about this issue.
I would think so, because I remember, um-
I received one, sorry.
Yeah, the UK had what, they were, they asked for 5,500 or something, people to come back in their healthcare system, so.
Um, and then, you know, just the struggles of personal protective equipment. Uh, you know, the, we are sourcing, uh, potential, um, equipment in, uh, in, out of other countries, which obviously do not necessarily meet the NIOH standard that, you know, we would all like to see. But, uh, given the CDC relaxation of some of those regulations and allowances for those, if no other, if uncertified equipment's not available. So we are looking for different options to provide protective equipment to our healthcare workers and our first responders. And we've disseminated, um, a number of supplies that we held internally, uh, out of our cash at the county cash, as well of, uh, supplies that we are receiving now from the state. Again, a very limited amount because the state cash spread over 36 counties is, uh, spread pretty thin. Uh, we, we are disseminating those to not only first responders and, and primary care providers, but also long-term care facilities and, uh, at, uh, home health organizations, hospice, really those, those folks that are out there having direct care with patients, particularly those at high risk. So there's very little to go around. So we're being, you know, we're being, unfortunately, we're having to be very miserly with our supplies and, and try to be as equitable as possible. And we're following, uh, Oregon Health Authority's guidance on prioritization of personal protective equipment as we do that.
I noticed today that the 4-H were actually given the email on how to make masks. Now, I have a lot of, uh, friends that I know that are out there making masks, but it, you know, it had come through down to that level. So I think that's excellent that people in our community actually can step up. We were on a call this morning at 7:00 AM with Eastern Oregon Counties, and those counties are so lacking in PPE. It's, it's really frightening how few, um, and then apparently, in the system, it first, they were shipped out to the, uh, fire departments instead of the proper chain of command for some of the things that went from the state. So they've tried to re, um, correct that mistake because they don't have, let's, like in Baker County, they were telling, um, they're very short, Baker, Grant, all, you know, all of our people that live out there.
There, there have been some challenges with some, uh, some resource request issues coming from the state. I think we're working on getting those cleaned up and been having conversations with Oregon Office of Emergency Management, Oregon Health Authority. And they're, they're, they're doing their very best. You know, it's, it's, uh, it's good, smart people doing a, uh, very difficult job in a very hasty fashion. And so we certainly, uh, don't, uh, we don't envy their situation. And we recognize just even from our own processes that, that these aren't easy. So we are working through those and, and, um, and we hope that as the supplies come in from the national stockpile, we were able to learn from our previous, the previous processes that were in place. And, and maybe we can fine-tune those and, and get a little better efficiency out of it, so.
Um, Nathan, what I talked about before the meeting a little bit, I wanted to bring up the other commissioners up to speed and Dr. Conway also. It's my understand, what I'm, it became, it's becoming obvious to me, it's hard to track those materials coming in, supplies, and we hear a lot of discussions. So the, what I thought we could help with is reaching out to our federal delegation to find out what's being sent from the federal government to the state. And then the, with, working with the state to find out what's sent to all the, all the counties. And like Commissioner Adair said, that all the counties are probably interested. So I think our congressional delegation, and particularly Congressman Walden's, going to work on that part of it. Um, do you get counts now? He, he was under the impression that, that daily counts are going out to all of the counties of what OHA's doing with supplies. Are you getting those counts or we know that sort of thing?
We get a burn rate from, uh, Oregon Health Authority, which basically reports how much they're disseminating and what they have left. Uh, it, it doesn't have a ton of granularity of exactly where it's going, which, which unders, yeah, understandably, yeah.
So they're not doing a county by county breakdown or agency by agency break?
They're not reporting that daily. We can get that information. But again, like I said, they had some transitions at the state on who was handling logistics and supply for these. And so I think what they, they did is they brought in an Oregon Department of Forestry, uh, Type 1 Incident Management Team, which manage large, complex fires. And, and they're helping, uh, evaluate some of the logistical pro, and planning processes within the state response. And so I anticipate over the next few days that those processes should get smoothed out. And this is not a, this is not an indictment of our state partners. This is an unprecedented situation, so.
Commissioner, do you need, in, in order to follow up with what you're trying to do with Congressman Walden, would you need the state to be specific about what PPE each county's getting? Yeah, I, I really think that's important. And I, I think because, and it's all just best estimate today, yesterday, tomorrow. I mean, it's, it's not exact, but it's har, it's hard to have discussions about this. And it, and it's hard for us to help if we can't, we don't really know the facts.
According to the call this morning at 7:00, um, they, OHA had just received a shipment from the federal government, but they were doing a count of it. So Senator Finley couldn't tell us.
I think what Nathan can do, because he knows a lot of folks that are probably with that Type 1 team, uh, can reach out proactively and say, this is the expectation. And then just follow up on it. We'll make sure that, that happens. And we'll explain we need that to close the loop on the, on the equipment being provided by the federal government.
Well, and I, and I agree, thank you. Uh, I, I think if all the counties were to get that, it adds a layer of transparency. Because unfortunately, and when people don't know what we're getting and what other people got, the immediate, especially in, in when you're panicked in crisis, is, well, gosh, did Deschutes County get everything or did Creek County get everything? In reality, we're all getting a very small percentage of what's available because, uh, it's being spread out over 50 states and, and all, you know, thousands of counties, so.
The other part specifically that I was interested in is I know that the big facilities and, and providers are, have a more direct line to you. But there's lots of little companies and medium-sized companies that do home health care where their, their people are in homes with vulnerable people every day. And do they have enough masks? Do they have enough gloves? What, and how are they accessing them? And I don't know if there's, is there somebody in this-
Yeah, we have, uh, we have folks and, and, you know-
Or chart that, yeah, that would be the person for those agencies to-
Obviously, there's always a chance for some of those small organi, uh-
Right.
Program to fall through the cracks. And that's what we're trying to avoid. But we do have really good existing networks with those organizations. And we have, um, our, uh, Kerry Co. specifically, and Holly Van Lu have been working on reaching out to those specifically, those ki, those, uh, organizations. And, and we do have some registry because those are required to be licensed, particularly like the, the small adult foster care homes are required to be licensed by the state. The, the challenge that we come into is, uh, you know, if we get, say, and this is a total approximate, if we have 15,000 to 17,000 N95 masks that we receive from the state, we had additional 4,000 or 5,000 masks that we'd held in cash. You know, that, say, 20,000 N95 masks really, with all the need, is, is really going to be spread thin. So the other thing we're doing is, is working on communicating with them and connecting them to other organizations that are providing either, um, PP, uh, personal protective equipment or appropriate, uh, and CDC, or in accordance with CDC guidance is appropriate alternative PPE, you know, i.e. homemade, uh, homemade masks and things like that.
Well, and those, yeah. Sorry, real quick on the coattails of that, because I, I always like to, to share this info. For anyone who's listening, or if there are folks that had not been able to be contacted, because sometimes we don't reach everyone, I always direct folks to the Joint Information Center because they have a direct line to the Emergency Operations Center. So if, if, uh, you know, folks who have questions can go through the Joint Information Center, and then that'll, uh, allow them and the Emergency Operations Center folks assigned to it to follow up.
Yeah, we, and we have a, uh, we have a, a unit also dedicated to reaching out to, uh, vulnerable populations that, uh, live independently as well. So if we're identifying those needs, we're trying to source support for them in, uh, you know, and, and realistically, in creative ways. Uh, our box is getting bigger every day. So, uh, we're having to think outside that bigger, bigger box. Um, and yes, the Joint Information Center's been a phenomenal asset to help manage those, that public outreach. And then I just want to note that we're, we're anticipating, and this will be good for those that are watching, uh, online, um, we will be pushing out, we have a number of residents of Deschutes County that have registered within our, um, emergency notification system that have self-identified as having certain, um, medical needs, such as dialysis or on-home oxygen or are mobility impaired. And we're preparing a message to send out to them through that system this afternoon, giving them a number to call if they need assistance. So we're, we're really trying to hit as many people as we can. But, and again, you know, with your contacts in the community, if you do find people that are feeling like they're being underserved, um, you know, we will do our level best to connect them with a resource. And so please just let us know and, and we'll, we'll be able to tie them in with the right folks.
Thanks.
So, is that the-
Yeah, the hospital, did, did we answer the, the blue question? I want to make sure, I think we did a little bit, so.
Okay, we've got the hospital.
Yeah.
And I know, like Summit has a surgery center. Um, was that going to be incorporated into this plan? I heard that at one time.
Yeah, so, so, uh, without getting into the granularity, because I, I would be careful at a public meeting making assertions that haven't been approved by those particular owners of said buildings. But Summit, uh, the center, all the, um, orthopedic centers, the clinics, the urgent cares are, are all being considered in how they can support the medical surge, uh, for St. Charles. And again, that, uh, when I, I mentioned the evaluating sites and what capability exists to each site and how they could be best used, and getting the appropriate waivers to transfer what would normally be an inpatient, uh, at the hospital to maybe one of these alternate care sites, um, and then allowing EMS to, uh, directly transport if appropriate. Um, those are all the things we're working on to build up that capacity. St. Charles has done a very intensive analysis of within their walls. And they, they came back to us earlier this week with that. And so what we're working on is then now identifying facilities outside their walls and working in partnership with St. Charles.
Can you say that number? What is inside their walls? Are you talking-
Gosh, I don't have that number right in front of me, but, um-
I thought it was 270.
It's more than that. They've, they've allowed, they have identified a significant amount of expansion as it relates to, um, their, uh, capacity. It is, it is more than that. Uh, part of the challenge with the COVID-19 is, is that you're really trying to separate COVID-19 patients versus non-COVID-19 patients. Because, you know, obviously, the last thing you want to do is, is have somebody that's in there with another medical emergency and then get them infected with COVID-19. So that adds a layer of complexity. Uh, and that number ultimately changes every day based on what their existing, uh, uh, bed count is. But they've done a tremendous amount of work about decompressing their system, I think. They are reporting to the Emergency Operations Center every day. And I apologize, I don't have that number right in front of me. But, uh, we have developed a system in place where we can get some at least daily accounting for what their, um- where we can get some at least daily accounting for what their, their capacity is each day.
Do you, and can you do me a favor, Nathan? What we'll do is we'll forward that information to Tom, so Tom has it. But if the commission would just bear in mind that it is a, you know, it is a fluctuating, dynamic situation based on what type of patient would, would come in there, but at least the commission would have that information. And, and if you had more specific questions, just feel free to reach out to me and we can get some, some additional info, if that's all right, Tom.
Sure.
Dr. Conway?
So the, the other issue is that in making surge capacity estimates, we have to bear in mind that many of the things that are being counted, especially in hospital inpatient are currently occupied.
Right, exactly.
So one of the federal surge strategies, for example, with the hospital ships and the National Guard tents, et cetera, that are being set up, basically MASH units, is to take people that are still acute enough that they require hospitalization and monitoring, but not afflicted with COVID and put them in the hospital ships or whatnot, because they're not really prepared to control and the higher end measures necessary for patients that require ventilation. So the, the availability of beds is going to continue to be a dynamic fraction of the, hopefully, the majority in many of these cases, for example, the surgical centers, that's going to be a dynamic fraction. And then the other thing is that there's many modifications that need to be made to different parts of hospitals in order, certainly for patients that may require ventilation. So there's, there's a massive effort to prepare for that. And I, I want to just harp on and go back to, this is why buying time through distance and hygiene is absolutely essential so that we have enough capacity in beds and we have enough capacity of staff and ventilators to manage people that are in very extreme need.
So Dr. Conway, I just have a question, and you, you kind of touched on this before. So what you just explained, will they be trying to make a movement to COVID-19 patient area and other medical issue patient area?
Yeah, they have to, well, you have to, you have to have.
Their location.
You have to designate, you have to triage who needs what level, and then you have to designate just per basic infection control practices. You have to designate and create, it's often called a barrier, but it might not be a physical barrier. It might be a desk where there's somebody that's vigilant about hygiene. And you have different rules about who can go where and which equipment can be moved among patients within such a barrier and then.
Okay.
Cross and what level of decon is necessary to, to go, to go out of that. And those are.
Thank you.
Those are the diligent oversight that many of us have experienced from key personnel like charged nurses can actually come in very handy in this, in this kind of circumstance. While it might not have been appreciated day to day, every day, that, that sort of assertive management can be very helpful in such circumstances. Are you finished with your structure?
Um, I think, yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna highlight one possible opportunity, although, you know, don't know that the timeliness works, but we did identify a shuttered surgery center in Redmond that we'd identified as a possible additional space that could potentially be pre-plumbed with met gases and, and had the appropriate, it did, we later determined that the health department is also looking at that site already. And I think there's some discussion going to be coming up forthcoming next week related to acquisition of that property. So, you know, those are the kind of things we're doing is we're looking around the community and finding spaces that we might be able to leverage in partnership with our healthcare providers, so.
Someone had actually emailed and wanted to know if something could be done at the fairgrounds.
So we did have a conversation with Oregon Health Authority and we're following up with that at the regional level. We have, we could put in a request for what's called a federal medical station, which essentially is, I believe it's a 250-bed, mobile health facility. The challenge with that is, is they'll prioritize those based on communities and, you know, depending on how this surge or wave goes, you know, maybe, maybe we'll be fortunate enough that they'll be demobilizing some of those from New York by the time we need them. But, so we've kind of looking at the, at the fairgrounds as a possible location for something like that, if we can get them and it's appropriate. So that, for example, they did set up a, a commensurate type facility at the Oregon State Fairgrounds.
And so what?
That's actually a state asset.
So, so why would we have to do a federal asset? I mean, if, I'm not saying, but if we ever need, I mean, they kind of did that thinking they're going to need it. That's just been set up and it must be just sitting there, right?
Yeah, that.
But there's nobody staying there yet.
Correct. Yeah, that was a, so that, that is a state asset that the state acquired possibly during H1N1. I don't remember exactly the backstory on that.
You mean all the beds and the tents?
Yeah, it comes in, it's a.
Oh, it's a whole.
Yeah, it's, it's a modular, crated, you know, and they have to find a location, set it up. And, and so the state has one of those and they prioritized it at the state fairgrounds. You know, state owns the property, they own the thing. And that, and that ultimately is a decompression tool for, again, for non-COVID patients to get those patients out of the hospitals to make more room available for patients that would need a higher acuity of care. And so if, if we could get a federal asset to do something similar, the fairgrounds is certainly an ideal location. And we've, we've game planned a few other possible locations if that's not the most appropriate, so.
But those kind of decisions would be made if we get to a certain circumstance, right? I mean, would, I mean, when we've only had 10 identified cases here and not much east of us.
So the, the, one of the reasons that, that having more testing available and having it up for a while so that we can see the trajectory to see whether or not we're having a surge of cases or not is so that we can anticipate that, because these are, these are lar, movable but very large.
Yeah.
Objects. And they require staffing, et cetera. So, and there's currently a very rigorous at the federal level between FEMA and HHS, there's a very rigorous triage for where, where these things need to go. And it's, and the war metaphor for this is germane, because an awful lot of successfully staging military maneuvers is materials handling movement and troop movement, et cetera. So there's very similar logistical challenges. And, and one of the very serious challenges we have is that we do not have, you, you can't, you can't count COVID from satellite, so we don't have the kind of granularity that we'd like to have in a, in such a theater to make decisions, just speaking elliptically a little bit.
Yeah, we, we would have to make that, so what we can do is identify a possible location of what logistical support needs, we would need to make that work. And, and then when the time is right, we would make that request and we'd be vying with that request. I, if we made that request today, it would probably be denied because we don't, you know, they're going to save those resources and try to move them, you know, it's similar to fire season, they move air tankers and type one helicopters all over the country based on what's going on.
Right.
So, so basically, that's the same general principle.
Well, and if I may, with testing, so we, we anticipate that there, as we're able to stand up testing, we will find many additional cases. It's only logical because there are many people who are symptomatic. We know from influenza like illness surveillance throughout the country that there's been, there's been a very sharp increase in the frequency of that trait without, in the absence of COVID testing. So we assume that a lot of that increase, because it happened very late in the flu season, is probably COVID. The flip side though is that once we've stood that up and once we have sort of a better perception of the case, case numbers, people that are infected that are at all symptomatic, won't be testing people probably that aren't symptomatic unless they've been named as contacts, then we can see whether or not we have a steady state or even.
We do.
Possibly a decline in that, like is actually being observed in some places now, especially China and Korea. And if so, that's the, probably the most reassuring thing that we can use to, for public consumption to deal with things like panic and because the, you know, the low level of disruption, when, and then, do you have other, other items?
The only thing I was going to bring up just real briefly is our, the team did come up with an unhoused population plan. And it, it essentially is in partnership with Neighbor Impact and the city of Bend. And then obviously, we're also working with COVO significantly. And it's multi-pronged approach of supporting congregate shelters and the health and welfare of those that are in congregate settings, but as well as those that are in, in dispersed camping or type settings. And then for our highest risk people, either those that can be discharged from a hospital but can't go home, but because of their illness, or they're particularly elderly or otherwise very high risk, a certain amount of hotel stays for those folks to keep them safe during this time. And we've identified three hotels that are willing to work with us on that. Neighbor Impact received a $150,000 fund, funding to, to support hotel motel vouchers. City of Bend is contributing at least 20,000, I believe, at this point. And then we do have some additional funds from your previous authorization to support that. So that's, that's the general, the general tone of that plan. And so I guess if, if you are comfortable with that, we'd like to move forward with, you know, risk management and county legal and, and our partners and make sure we have a plan that, you know, right, protects the county as well.
Contractual agreements with these three facilities.
Yeah, exactly.
And what this, when they be used and how they be used and what we do to pay.
And protective measures that we would take to minimize risk to their facilities and staff and.
It sounds like then with, between what the county authorized, was it last week? Yeah, I think it was last week.
Yes.
And then, and the, with the sheriff's office, what we authorized and with what, it sounds like the city and Neighbor Impact's grant, that's going to be close to $400,000 worth of.
I think we had, I think we had planned about 75,000.
Okay, so about 300.
So yeah, it'd be about 250,000, you know, for now, you know? And, and obviously, you know, as this plays out, that could go up or down depending on, on need of the community. So I think, I think that would be a reasonable ballpark figure to.
Okay.
If I could add, there is one other tranche of funds that we've become aware of, and that's the Pacific Source, is, I believe in their role as administrator for the Oregon Health Plan, has authorized the use of what are called flex funds. And that's, that's a substantial tranche as well, it's over $100,000. So, so we are making headway on that, and I think that, that'll be a dynamic thing that we'll follow. But having, moving forward rapidly with the mutual collaboration and assistance agreements is probably the limiting factor right now on actually doing that.
Well, I, for one, would be in favor of moving forward with those agreements or.
Do we need a motion, Dave?
I'm not totally sure that it's formulated sufficiently, but yeah, if you want to authorize as part of all these various emergency responses, Sergeant Garabee and, and his team entering into the agreements, I think he indicated they'd run those through legal and we'll certainly get on them immediately.
So I'd make a motion that we would authorize legal to work with Sergeant Garabee and whoever else in the, this, on this unhoused population plan with regard to agreements with these volunteer, volunteering hotels, motels, come up with the drafts of those and I'd move that.
Okay. Is there a second on the phone?
I will second it.
Any further discussion?
I think it's a great idea to keep moving forward.
Are we, when you said people that are leaving the, the hospital but they can't go home, are you talking about those people going to this hotel too then?
Uh, these would be people that don't have a home to go to or.
Okay.
Would maybe potentially they, being discharged from a hospital either with a COVID-19 or even an influenza or other, some sort of situation puts them at risk. And then we wouldn't want to send them to a car or a, the warming shelter or something like that. We'd, we'd want to protect their health and, and, or if they do have COVID-19 and they can be discharged, we don't want them to be going to a warming shelter.
Right. And, okay, thank you.
And it sounded like Commissioner DeBonne had something too.
Commissioner DeBonne?
No questions, just a comment would be the fact that this is something that we have been asked about, people are kind of have it in their minds, so it's wonderful that we're kind of discussing it and formalizing it today for the citizens.
Thank you.
And also, as I understand, this is really, we're getting ready if we need it, is essentially what we're doing at this point.
Yeah, I, I would anticipate that, you know, currently, Neighbor Impact is already working with a, a few clients that they've deemed particularly high risk and are giving vouchers. So we would, we would collectively work together and it would be scalable and likely scale as, as this goes forward. You know, the, we recognize the limitations in, in, in not being able to house every single person that, and frankly, not everybody wants that. So we're trying to find solutions for those that both meet the, the liberty interests of our community members, but also the public safety and the public health interests.
And then actually, just to sort of, I suppose it might be a grace note for this, so the hotels have stepped forward, these are in addition to the ones that the county customarily uses for billoting. So there's three that have volunteered to, to embrace this model, so we really appreciate that. So it's a, a form of volunteerism.
Yes.
It's really appreciated by.
Great, by the community. Another step up. Thank you, community. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes?
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Mr. Sharon?
That's all I have.
Thanks very much. So in order to honor your, how busy you are and, and your time, we tried to prepare a much more sort of formal briefing. And then I also want to point out that we're happy to come and provide individual briefings, at least weekly, to you all if you would like that. And that way we can handle more, sort of more volume of questions and be able to run them to ground as, as needed. You should be receiving this daily on weekdays, going out, it's assembled to close the business in sort of early evening. And that has, this is the COVID-19 Emergency Operations Center Daily Situation Report. And this has a summary of many of the questions that we've heard here. So we've tried to organize this in a way that you have it right, right at hand to be able to answer questions that you might receive from the public, et cetera. The second thing is, I wanted to start with, we've been asked and, and there's already been some feedback provided about that. And that's just to summarize what, what we think would be most helpful from elected officials to do. And that's advocating for good public policy and resources with fellow, fellow local, state and federal elected officials. Message to the public and support the efforts being done by local governments and our healthcare providers to protect the health and safety of the community. Providing high level, in your, wearing your public health authority guise or gown or that, that office to provide a high level guidance to, to me as the public health administrator and to be help in developing a strategy to help, help us usefully and productively direct the incident management team and the incident command system to perform at a high level in a way that, that makes efficiency of very meager resources, at least at this time. And then the system does not mean that we know at our level every detail at all times, but it means that we're delegating things. And as, as this grows and if it ends up needing to grow much more, that we have to be sensitive, that we have to make sort of field, field type decisions rather than long-term strategic planning decisions, although it certainly provides an opportunity to do that. And that, that should help us to provide reports out to you much more efficiently and effectively. Questions about that before we move on?
No, I think that's an excellent idea. If we have private meetings with you on a weekly basis, to know what's going on. I know yesterday morning, I actually called Thermal Fisher at 5:13 in the morning because I knew that was, they were just opening up and that company was so incredible. People answered the phone, they got me to the right departments. I was just trying to find out, you know, when are you shipping things? It's, it's a US company in Massachusetts. And I, I, when I got off the phone, I told my husband at seven, I said, oh my gosh. And he goes, well, that's the way it should always be. So hopefully, one of the end results of this experience will be bringing back our medicines to America on a greater level. But that company, you know, I think we can be really proud if we're working with them at all. They are, they're on it.
Good to hear.
Here, I ask, are they sending any swans?
They said that things are right on backorder and they could not give me a date, which is, but you know, they did call and I said, we, we are in between California and Washington State. We are in the, you know, the center part of the country, or the central part of our state, and we, we desperately need this. And we serve a huge community. I know, you know, people from all over Eastern Oregon Drive here for their health care. So they were incredibly responsive and, you know, said that, yes, we, we put, you know, urgent rush on our orders, but need those. know, said that, yes, we put, you know, urgent rush on our orders, but need those purchase order numbers to let them know so that they'll pop them to the top. They were very, it was incredibly a positive experience throughout the entire company.
Well, thank you for that. The second area is about what you might be able to do to help around testing, excuse me, personal protective equipment, forgive me. And that, we've already talked quite a bit about that. But basically, just to reiterate the same approach, advocating for, particularly what you had asked Commissioner Henderson, advocating for resources at the state and federal level. And we greatly appreciate that. And we appreciate another elected official, Representative Helt, has been very proactive and has tried to titrate being assertive, I think just short of tormenting the Oregon Health Authority for assistance. And I think that unfortunately is probably the...
One question, I knew that came up yesterday, and she was on the call, speaking about that a little bit. Is she giving you like daily or regular reports? Or are you calling her saying, can you find out this? And then she calls to find out about this?
Very frequent communication, often by text, more often catching up over the weekend when everybody actually has a chance to breathe. So there's a lot of, a lot of back and forth. And I'm reaching out to my colleagues a lot often on the weekend, trying to figure out where...
I think, but are you initiating with her, or is she initiating with you? Because we would do similar things if we're asked. I just don't know what it is.
No, she reached out to me. At the end of our first, the announcement about her first case, she caught me at that. And then we arranged to talk. And, you know, she's been reaching out to me. Mostly, what I'm doing is trying to field and support the questions she had. And then there's certain key things that we've needed at OHA that was probably useful to triangulate. So that's been helpful. I think, I'm sorry. So it wasn't to say that she's doing more than anyone else. It's just to acknowledge that that's actually that...
No, and that's great she's doing it. I'm just saying, is there something we can do similarly? And because I've...
Hopefully, yes.
I think we can. And so we have, she worked, you know, she's a state representative. So those agencies kind of connect to her. Like, if you want to know what CDD was doing, or our health department is doing, we're good, we meet with you a lot. So she probably knows people at OHA that come in front of her committees, that she's connected to. But we, I have a couple of other ideas with our other legislators and then with other government people at the state level, we could help with somewhat, so.
I think if I were to differentiate, I think because Representative Helt is somebody that are health-related and non-related committees associated with health, she can help to make sure that for things like that, other governments, counties, and eastern regions, the state decided Cascade sort of more pull together, pull together as one. And as you said, interface with the legislative process and whatnot. And because of that, especially during her advocacy for 3163 last year, through the, eliminating the non-medical exemptions for immunizations, she's a well-known figure dealing with OHA. So I think that's something, that's sort of the sphere, this intra-state and the state, federal interface. I think that making clear, I would say not just the needs of the county, but pointing, I'd like to think, one of our goals in this is to do a really great job locally in the county in Central Oregon, so that we're, provide a model for how to do this. So also, you're hopefully learning a lot of things in these discussions. So pointing out that we're really doing our best to lean forward, be ready to deal with whatever ends up happening, rather than just waiting for orders from afar, and rather than just passively accepting supplies. Then the other thing, I think, is the public information thing, which, because you're local officials and therefore trusted, trusted informants for the community, to help the public understand why, the community understand why there's limited testing currently at even urgent care and primary care clinics, and that that's having to be reserved for people that are moderately to severely ill.
But Dr. Conway, I want to point out, because there are such stringent standards for people that are tested, of those people, the 112 people in Deschutes County that have been tested, only 8.9% of them were positive. So they're taking people that really have, you know, they're over an age and they've got all these issues, but only less than 10% were positive. So I know we're being very, very careful. So I think that's, that's good.
Yes, I agree. And then pushing the message that local health providers are doing everything they can to increase testing, however, once again, the supplies are limited. And that means if people aren't currently meeting those criteria, they should reach out to their providers, but try not to press too much for testing if they just have the sniffles or mild cough, no fever. Because we're just not at, we do want to be at a place where we can test everyone that's symptomatic. We need that surveillance information, but we just don't have the supplies to be doing.
You know, we've talked, and we're kind of working out with Whitney, doing a video of kind of public information. So that would be a good topic. Why is testing so hard to do? Because what's really hitting people is odd, is that you're not supposed to go to the doctor if you think you're sick, unless you're really sick. That's never been some message that the medical community sent out. It's like, well, if you're sick, go in. And people already are reluctant, but with the cost of medicine. But now it's kind of a weird, so I think that would be a good topic for us to, and we could do a nice demonstration of what's involved with a test. I mean, you've explained it well enough that I could do it a minute, saying why it's hard to get a test, and the whole issue of change your clothes between them, and the type of testing, and...
I think that would be...
Yeah, that'd be a really good thing, yeah.
That provides an example. So if we wanted to stand up very high-volume testing, which like the drive-in setting that's being stood up in many places, Seattle area, UW, and New Rochelle, New York, which were both sort of earliest epicenters, I understand New Orleans is doing the same thing now. Having equipment like Pappers, which is a self-contained breathing apparatus, not with its own supply like Scooba, but containing the head and with a cowl over the shoulders, plus a face shield, permits you to handle a lot more people as throughput. But they actually, and we have a few, and the hospital has a few, but they require changing of a face shield, and that's not, those are very, in very short supplies. Even that, which one would think of as being a very normal thing to resort to, is, we're short of. And then that links to the other issue, that IMT is pushing out a limited supply of much-needed PPE to long-term care facilities, where it has to be really, so they don't, so because we're asking long-term care facilities to help contain the spread, if they have any cases in their facilities, they have to have very good PPE and expertise and a high level of hygiene. And that means that they are going to use more PPE, particularly gloves and masks. And they all should have some sort of eye protection when they're doing certain things, which could provide a lot of splatter hazard.
I do, I would like to comment at this time, you know, we had a lot of veterans in Lebanon that were positive, but I really haven't heard, it sounds like that's much more positive result so far compared to what's, what happened in Kirkland. Are you aware of anything over there? Remember, I think, the veterans facility in Lebanon?
What's the, I'm not sure what the...
Well, I'm just, I didn't hear about any of the veterans at that facility dying. I heard about one in Portland that passed away, but I haven't heard any deaths from the Lebanon facility for veterans.
My memory is that the outcomes were not that favorable, but I'd have to check.
Really?
I haven't heard that through media.
Okay, because I did, I did talk to another...
And your question is really, why, if Lebanon's doing, is doing better than Kirkland? Kirkland seemed like the, you know, just such a tragedy.
Right. Well, the index cluster of cases was in Kirkland. And that was the first sort of, if you will, rude awakening in the United States, that this is definitely here. And by the time they were able to fully recognize it and diagnose it, it already spread quite a bit in the facility. But I think that, in a way, for Oregon, would be very similar to the, to Lebanon. And by nature, people that are in long-term care facilities are people that have limitations and greater needs than the population. And they're typically going to be a more high-risk profile. Either they have their aged, or they have chronic disease, or they've suffered a stroke or injury that requires either recuperation or long-term residence in such a facility. And those are really known, both opportunities for pathogens and places that we very frequently see disease outbreaks. For example, the two places that are most notorious among epidemiologists for gastrointestinal illnesses, like, that are highly contagious, like norovirus, or what used to be called norovirus, are cruise ships and the long-term care facilities. And the reason is the same. They're both, they're all enclosed, intimate, relatively intimate environments that require very scrupulous hygiene. And you're both delivering, delivering food and having to handle all the outputs of the same people. So it's, those are very high potential for infection moving quickly. I don't think that we're doing any, as far as I know, even able to do any routine surveillance to see whether or not there's any asymptomatic ill people in those facilities. And that's one of the reasons why there's a very strong athletic recommendation that family members not visit at this time, for fear that one of them could seed something. And then the person would have it for a few days before it's known, and potentially shed quite a bit of virus in the day or two before their onset of symptoms. The other thing is, thanks for being such a student of our data commissioner there. You covered the risk factors that we had mentioned. I only want to point out that of those 10 and those vectors about travel, most are not hospitalized, greater than 60, and most are female. I want to make it clear that those are, those are independent variables. So that doesn't mean that the majority have all of those traits at once. Those are individual factors for...
Right. But it just, it made me, well, I don't know if it made me feel better.
It wasn't meant as a correction.
But when I saw it, at least I saw, you know, I knew what we were dealing with.
Sure. It's just that we want to be cautious so that people don't go looking for people that have traveled and meet those things as individuals, because these are different traits that are exhibited.
So in other words, the same majority here might be a different majority over here.
Yes.
And the comment about travel is that they're not people traveling here. They're people from here that have traveled abroad or something and then come back.
Yeah, yes. So actually, we, so, and that's actually an important question, because the way that states count cases is based on a residents' record. So for example, if we had a case here that wasn't a resident here, we would, that would be managed here, but it would be reported from their home state.
So if a Portlander was here in Deschutes County, would that be a Portland case or a Deschutes case?
No, I actually don't know the correct answer. A lot of people that come here from Portland, it's a second home, and that's an ambiguity. But I was talking about different states and the way that's...
Yeah, okay.
And the way we would report it and detect it through ORFUS, which is the communal disease detection and reporting system. So as far as travel goes, yes, some of these folks had international travel. Some of them were return travelers from places that are now known hotspots in the United States.
So kind of a follow-up on the 10 confirmations. So when you first explained the process to us, you said, you know, you get the confirmation, then you do investigation of a network of people that have contact or whatever. Do you have any statistics or numbers on that? I mean, what's typical? Is it five people or 50 people you're investigating? And are any, any things you've learned? I mean, it's only a small group, 10 people, but what are you finding out there?
I don't have statistics at hand, but I can tell you that, so the reason that we do an investigate, there's two reasons to do what you're referring to as an investigation. One is so that we get a better insight into how it was acquired.
Yeah.
I'm sure there isn't some new risk factor that we're not aware of. And then the second is contact definition and notification, which is ideally done through the person that's ill, rather than our reaching out. And that can vary. So for example, if you have a household of two, you know, a couple in their 60s or 70s, and they've just gotten back from wherever, then it may well be that the spouse is the only real contact. On the other hand, if you had, you know, somebody working in an airline, or whatever, or a theater or whatnot, and whatever the history seemed to be, that you need to do more outreach, you could have much more contacts. There's no simple answer. We do track what are called PUMs, which is persons under monitoring. Although actually, the state is sort of relaxing that because the level of both work and paperwork is very burdensome for that. But we're still able to do that because we don't have that much going on here yet. But there'd be a point at which, having the latitude to not do that, if we have sudden rapid increases...
And that's kind of what I'm asking. So as I understood it when you explained it last week, I think it was that we're actually, some of our health department people are actually doing some of the investigation. We had mentioned the persons under monitoring.
Sure, sure.
So are you, are you learning anything? I mean, it was good to see the two examples, the isolated couple and the flight, you know, person in the airlines. But anything you're learning?
That is primarily a health department activity, by the way that the communal disease laws and provisional responsibility are written. So that investigation, which I might add, for infection control sake, is typically done by telephone, is usually done by our infection control nurses. But we have a limited number of those. So if we suddenly have a lot of cases with a lot of contacts, then we will do everything possible to define that and do the outreach. But doing the daily touch base of a person under monitoring with each person may become impractical. And I think, I think in certain parts of the state, and certainly in places that are now, where COVID is now epidemic, or arguably endemic, like Seattle area, increasingly Los Angeles, New York, New Orleans, et cetera, that, it's far beyond being able to do that. So there is something about volunteerism. I think this might have been mentioned earlier, but that St. Charles is accepting homemade masks. And on their website, they have instructions for sewing. It just says using high density or high denier cotton. But I've reached out to see if we can get a little more granular guidance on that. For example, if you're using cotton, you wouldn't want to use something that was sized, which means just starched so that it stays stiff while you're sewing it, because that, that may fill a lot of the pores in the fabric and make it harder to breathe through, for example. So we've asked for guidance on that. And then the other thing is Sergeant Garabee and people working directly with him are making inquiries about whether or not we can buy N95 fabric, which typically is moldy layer fabric with a micro pore layer in the middle laminated. And these are often non-sewn, that we could use to fabricate masks locally. If we can get a big couple rolls of that, then there's, it's possible to distribute that to people that are willing to sew. There's a couple of outdoor fabrication industries that locally that have a lot of sewing capacity that have reached out. So we're trying to find out if we can do that, or if it's just going to be the more improvised cloth with maybe a little bit more granular direction. So it's heartwarming to see that level of volunteerism.
I had 10 yards of blue cotton that I offered to my friend who's doing it. And she goes, no, Patty, I have lots of fabric. And I do have a sewing machine too, if anyone wants to take up this in their spare time.
I'd be happy to share, forward the website. Well, it's actually...
No, actually, the, it came through the 4-H kids. I mentioned it. The 4-H children of Deschutes County got an email on how to do this, you know, that are in the sewing. And I did forward it on to my quilter friend who's doing this. So there's, yeah, a lot of people are really trying to make a difference.
So there is some, one other statistic that I do want to share about cases. And it's, it's not really a happy statistic, but I think it's understandable if we dive into it. As of, excuse me, as of yesterday, the fatality rate in Oregon for reported cases has been 3.8%. And those with hospitalization were reported as a hospitalization rate of 34%. So this is, these are high. This is, this is similar to the statistics that are being seen in Italy, and maybe a little bit higher in certain regions of Italy. But this is relatively high, and it's higher than the Chinese or the Korean experience, for example, where there's very large numbers available. However, the reason for this, I believe, is primarily because we have very restrictive testing. So when you're doing restrictive testing, you're not doing a cross-section of population, or even the people that are ill. So I think the reason for this being high, rather than around 1%, which was reported in large series coming out of China in particular, is because we're only testing the people that are quite ill. So this is a subset of the people that are already quite ill. So this is a subset of the people that are already quite ill. So I don't think this is terribly concerning, but having said that, it's nonetheless a tragedy for each of those persons and their families and a very good reason for us to be very athletic and things like social distancing, et cetera. Then the other thing is that the hospital was clear, has been clear about what will happen with their system if there's not adequate social distancing. I hope, at least some of you saw the webinar yesterday, and some of you were actually on, that was organized a sort of a hybrid press conference and webinar. I was grateful that St. Charles has embraced this hazard wholeheartedly and is now promoting the issue of being good with social distancing, hygiene, et cetera, so that we help persuade people to actually stay home and not be partying on the beach or in the parks as much as that might be appealing to those of us probably too old to do it and to maintain distance in the hopes, talk about flattening the curve, but it's basically to buy time so that we stretch out the case numbers so we're better prepared and hopefully also the number of people that get the illness will be reduced. Not to sell St. Charles short, but we have to realize that also all the other clinics that we're aware of are playing an active role in reaching out about surge capacity for triage and other things. There are many other clinics that have or are standing up testing themselves and they're also very involved in this collective surge capacity planning. And actually, St., we have been invited to join a meeting with St. Charles about whether or not we want to mutually collaborate with all the different entities in some sort of central testing in addition to not supplanting any of the current testing that's going on in clinics as soon as we have very large numbers of kits available. So there'll be a fairly granular discussion. I hope you'll excuse me, so I have time to leave to make a noon meeting, say, say within about 20 minutes or so of now.
Well, you know, I'm glad to hear that last comment you made is that you're, is that you're having a meeting of people to talk about whether they want to support a...
To start the process.
Oh, good.
We have a strong end and we have, that's actually one of the reasons for being held now is that later on this afternoon is the weekly clinical cluster huddle. So that would be one of the inputs there and hopefully get buy-in and then the division of labor and one of, because we're a public agency, one of the things we need to do is both provide technical information, but also make sure that everybody that stepped forward has their own role and their own chance and not centering things inappropriately.
So there's kind of the big clinics. Are you also reaching out to the smaller clinics that may send you three or four people for testing as opposed to 30 or 40 or?
Certainly, that would be the intent, but.
I've had people lobby me for an independent testing place. I like the idea from the get-go and that's great, you're working on it, you know?
So I think that the thing that may end up getting here before anything else does en masse may be point-of-care testing and that would be a fast kit that doctors' offices could use. And to the extent that the kits are available and they'll do that, as long as they'll share the information with us, that's just great from our perspective. We're neutral about who does it from the, so the division of labor, of course, is that the clinics and the hospital, their job is to care for patients and our job is to figure out what's going on at that sort of meta and mega level. So from our perspective, it doesn't matter who's doing this as long as they know what they're doing in the head of the case.
The only reason I like the centralized, you know, independent deal from just a public sense is that I think people are hearing from their particular clinics or wherever they're not supposed to go to them. Nobody's sure when you should get tested. I know people that have been kind of sick and they're worried and they, they are, so it might be easier on the public if there was, they didn't have to go through every individual clinic. And so that's a little bit different perspective. I'm not, I don't really care who does it except for the fact if it was a joint thing, it seems like it would be more collaborative. And I'm confident if Douglas County can do it, we can do it. And so it seems very possible and people will like that, I think. The public would like that. It would again lower the emergency sense.
Sure.
That's my feeling.
Basically all using, UW has been very kind to share a protocol publicly for how to do this, including a video and a number of shows.
Yeah, you showed it, shared it with us, yeah.
About what to do. And Douglas County is, we'll be using it as one of the inputs here. One of the reasons though that we certainly have to work with and defer to St. Charles, it's our only hospital system. They run most of the emergency rooms, emergency departments and often urgent care as well. And to the extent that they can manage this en masse, that's actually a very good precautionary measure before people enter the ER, et cetera, any crowded indoor precinct. Immersely, it's getting warm enough now as long as it's during the daytime. Hopefully it'll be warm enough out in the town or wherever they, maybe with a little space heater. So anyhow, that's, that's an effort that's being stood up.
It's actually 10 degrees colder today than average. That's what Bob Shaw said this morning. So I'm like, let's bring on some spring weather. Yes. Yes, it's supposed to be like 55 today and it's only going to be 44, so.
So thanks for the opportunity to brief you. I hope it's better to get this in sort of a more concise and.
Yeah, good.
Thank you so much, Dr. Conway. So appreciate it. And, you know, we have to keep leaning forward, isn't that the term? That's probably the only athletic thing I do all day is lean forward, but, you know, social distancing and we have to spread out so that our system isn't overwhelmed. It's critical. And I think so many people understand it. When I hear that my cousin is shopping with gloves on, I know that I better get really serious. So, you know, I think the message has gotten out there. I just, I would just like the fact that if we can bring the panic down, it's just do the simple things, stay with your family, and we can, we can really make a difference.
Well, in the long run, the best way to manage panic long run is to do everything we can now so that there's no need to be frantic and very concerned later.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, if you'd like to add something?
I was just wondering if you're ready to move on to the next item on your outline there?
Yes.
Okay.
Sergeant Garabee and Dr. Conway, they can stay here or is it, are they excused?
Well, that.
Do you want them here for your?
Not up to me. I think they sounded like Dr. Conway had another appointment he made to get to. I know the sheriff had one other item that he was going to plan on weighing in on, but.
The agenda you're referring to is building closures, one of the elements in that?
Indirectly.
Well, I'll stay for a few minutes and if you don't mind, I'll just leave when I have to.
Okay. So Monday, we talked at length about the governor's order that was issued and how it might pertain to Deschutes County. As you know very well, beginning last week and since Monday, many of our departments that have remained open have employed a range of different social distancing measures within their buildings. And I think some of you have gone around and actually seen them outside of this building. We all see the ones that are being done here. So we are certainly prepared to continue that under more or less the status quo option that we discussed on Monday. But the other thing we talked about on Monday was really getting some more detailed information from each of our departments, especially the ones that we don't see every day that are at outlying locations about, you know, what exactly are their essential services? You know, what services do they need to keep continuing to do for the, you know, health, safety, welfare of the citizens that we serve? So we sent out a request to each of the departments to do just that, to identify those services and plus to let us know, you know, how those services can and would continue under a couple of different scenarios. So obviously, under the status quo now, you know, we are continuing to provide those services, whether they're in this building and other buildings in the field and so on. But what, one thing we wanted to know was if buildings were to close, could those services continue and under what circumstances could they? So what you have in front of you is sort of a summary report that Eric prepared as well as the actual responses from each department. We wanted to make sure that you saw those as well to make sure that we're, or to help you gain whatever detail you'd like within those departments. So within each or for each department, you'll see the list of what that department considers to be their essential services, as well as on the far right, you know, whether those could continue in some other format under, say, a building closure. And I'm not going to go through each one. We can certainly talk about each department. And by the way, I think that most department directors are watching and are prepared to call in if there are specific questions. But, you know, as we, you know, one of the options we talked about on Monday and last week was as opposed to just locking the doors and drawing the curtains would be to have a signage, very clear signage at the entrances to our building with immediate contact information for a citizen who needs one of our services to be able to call immediately, where we would staff that, you know, all day long during business hours and be able to either refer the call to the right department if it's a building like ours with multiple county functions in it, or to go down and personally meet them, you know, and find out the nature of their business and guide them to where they might need to be or some variation. You know, as you know, we have a whole range of services across many buildings, so it's a little bit difficult to have a one-size-fits-all, but we would adapt that particular theme to the nature of the services provided at each of our departments. And then there are some, some county services that we simply must remain open. The landfill and the transfer stations, for instance, that we believe are an essential public health service so that garbage doesn't stack up. So those facilities would continue to remain open to the franchise haulers as well as self-haul individuals who bring their own. And then, you know, again, nuanced by department, you know, for each of those services, there's options such as a drop-off location for, say, Platts at the county surveyor's office out at the road department, or for building plans over at community development for customers to be able to continue, you know, those that may not be comfortable with the wide variety of online and phone services that we have in each of our departments, you know, who are comfortable with, you know, the physical transaction part for that to continue, again, either under a, say, a drop-off scenario or, you know, as I just mentioned, they, they come to the door and they're able to call a staff person who would be in the building to come in and meet with them. And as well, the other one, as noted, would be to arrange an appointment, a physical appointment with a staff person to conduct whatever nature or whatever piece of county business needs to be done, that that would continue to be available. Our phones are obviously unaffected by this, to make arrangements to meet with a customer across, across the different departments. So that's kind of a summary. So happy to either answer questions as department directors are on the phone and go into this in whatever detail you would, you would like.
I just want to acknowledge and thank Samantha Pepper, a new county employee, for her excellent presentation of all this data for us. You know, it's clear that, yes, we need to lock our doors and we need, you know, I would believe and have the phone numbers on the door for people that hadn't already set up appointments or found out on our website what they can do to take care of their business. Because we, we want to keep people, if they've got something they need done, if they need a passport or a marriage license, it's, you know, I don't want to stop that. But this definitely seems like, other than the transfer station, everything else seems like it can be locked? The door can be locked? Did you not think?
And just a comment to that, Commissioner, you'll see for the sheriff's office, access to our building's not essential to our services, but I absolutely respect the concern of the commission about being accessible to the citizens. And I know Tom was as well, we had the same conversation. So this, this isn't closing for business, this is more or less a, an accompaniment for service, just like you explained. If there is someone that needs a service, they'll call the phone number or knock on the door and then they'll be guided and cared for.
And actually, for health services, we're doing our best to maintain our current service levels, but doing a lot of it by telemedicine and other forms of electronic outreach and then having the option available for the categories that we described for the prices and WEC, et cetera. Having said that about the service levels, there are certain ways it can be deferred for a period of time.
But then last evening, I did speak with Janice Garceau and in behavioral health, and I realized in that department, I mean, there would be set up appointments, but there are people that they need to see, some of them on a daily basis for, for the care.
Particularly many of the clients in our facility's closed system.
Right. So I know that's a, it's a enormous burden that, you know, your office needs to keep that connection, but it's for the, you know, it's for the health and the future health of those clients.
So even for the clients that need to be seen daily, whether it's to receive medication or assessment of the ones that may be particularly fragile, we are doing our best to reach out in advance to find out whether they're ill and manage that, whether they're having symptoms that could be indicative of COVID or even the flu, so that we have a way of managing that and doing our best to minimize the hazard to our staff and other clients.
Oh, Dr. Conway, I had one question, not about this, but I read where prisoners in Washington State were making gowns. We don't have a need for gowns in this state? Probably not?
Well, we do need, we do need isolation gowns.
But that wouldn't be cotton?
Correct.
Okay.
The cotton gowns would be more just hospital gown type. We would need.
Tyvek.
Yeah, Tyvek or isolation type gown.
Okay. I did, I did see that and I thought, well.
Well, so certainly the protective suite does include gowns and the Tyvek gowns, especially if you do things like drive-through testing, we're certainly having enough of those will be important. It's important for splashes, certainly in the hospital, especially in ICU, it's important. It's not the highest in our list, but it's certainly, certainly.
So that's been, that's been ordered though?
I'm sorry?
Have they been ordered then, Nathan? That type of gown?
We have requested gowns through sources, but most of the commercial providers are backordered. And I believe most of the state supply is also not been shipped. I'd have to check on the specifics of what we've received.
Okay. I'm sorry for interrupting without, but I just, it was something, I was thinking if it was, we could do something about it. Maybe we could make a call or something.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Henderson, did you?
Well, I mean, you look at the matrix and it's, most department heads have said that the public doesn't need building access for service, but then a lot of them have, well, by appointment, well, that's public access. So what are we saying? We're going to not let people wander around our halls? Well, I don't think very many people do. Or you're just saying, well, before you come, make an appointment. And it's like, well, what's, how's that different than coming and making the appointment? I guess that's on some of these. It's like, like, and so I guess I'm a little bit, it's not, we're not, what it looks like it's saying isn't exactly what it's saying and.
Yeah. And I think, Commissioner, if I could offer this just by having some of the conversations, I, I think what's, what the difference is, is the building's not being closed, it's just individuals coming in that need to seek out that service, like you're mentioning, will be accompanied. And so it's just, it's just they're accompanied because what we're finding at our building is even though you don't have to come into our building for a lot of services, we're still going to accompany individuals into our building if they want to visit with us or if they, you know, we need to bring them inside and interview them, but we just want a controlled environment because some of the time we can go out and guide them to the service or source that they're, they're seeking. So I think I completely understand what you're saying. So it is just a, an accompanied access to the building in need of service.
I think also the point is with the health, is it what the more elsewhere, that calling to make an appointment gives an opportunity for triage and diversion or deflection of people that are ill. And it's also, as we're trying to encourage our workforce to do as much as possible remotely, it's a good way for us to force management and not having to have too many people as greeters and whatever else.
Right.
That way the person can meet their client rather than our, having somebody like we have now stationed at the entrance to each building.
And I, and I, on the.
And I, and I, on the heels of that, as well, Commissioner, we've been into this for close to two weeks now, and everyone has understood why we do what we do. We have not received bad, bad comments about it.
But, but really, what we're saying isn't no, and then by appointment. We're saying, yes, but by appointment. These are still essential, or we wouldn't be doing the point. Well, I mean, this is a big difference.
Right.
And then, we're putting out a public message, and we're saying that there are certain services that we continue to see is essential, like health, that, yeah, so I'm just saying, if you were to grab this, that isn't what this reads like, but then you think about it, it's, we're saying, yes, some are, but we either want by appointment or by accompaniment. So that would be the message we would send to the community. And I'm, I get the by appointment because of the, what Dr. Conway was saying is, well, maybe we don't need to see him right then. They should call. Does the accompaniment, I can see in your particular office where you want it, is that the same way it would work in all the services, that all these departments that want it by, is accompaniment a key thing? Like within our building, should they be accompanied from the front door, or to the clerk's office, or from outside the clerk's office, which is what we're doing right now? So is there, and what's the health part of the accompaniment? I'm just trying to break this down a little bit. Does that make sense?
I don't think we want too many people walking around our hallways just by the chance that that could happen if the door was unlocked. I know when I visited my doctor the other day, I actually had to call the office number, and they said they would call me when they could come and meet me at the door. Then they accompanied me, and they were very careful on keeping social distancing everywhere. So...
So for instance, this building, we could have, you, you want the front door locked, and there's a sign there, clerk's office phone number, and they'll call that, and then somebody will come down from the clerk's office...
Right.
...to meet with that person that walked upstairs. So you're trying to diminish any just random, I don't know how much random wandering there is, but that's kind of what you're saying.
Sometimes there is. Sometimes you'll see a family, or you'll, or you'll see several families. You know, you just, really, we don't know.
So is that a, is that, I mean, we all get different people coming to our buildings.
And I agree with you both, Commissioners, and I would, I would offer to Tom, and I think he's, he's said as much, as well, is that I think it would be good to have an individual stationed down there. I think it would be good to have one number to call. And, and I think that's where Tom's going with it as well. So it's, it's less of an impact on the customer. And, and then that accomplishes what you're trying to share, and then they can be guided to that particular service that, that they want. Because the fact of the matter is, and we talked about it as well, is folks do come to our buildings for service, and, and, and we don't want to affect that any more than we need to. And so when they come, we just make sure, we try and see them knocking on the door, or we have the phone number for them, and then we can go out and initiate the contact. Some of the things we did do as far as appointments, we tried to call ahead, and we had to postpone some of them, because we had to adjust our service based on, on some things that came up during this. But I think that is the, the general thought.
So Commissioners, if you were willing to entertain a, a little bit different customer interaction than what we have now, it's not by any stretch a one size fits all. So we would have to have very clear messaging for each of our locations on how this might work. For this building, I agree with the sheriff, that one number is, is much easier to handle than multiple numbers for each department. We would conceivably identify a single person or a single station where that call would go to, and then that person would triage and either deal with it directly if it's a general question, or refer it to an identified person in one of the departments for them to then act accordingly, whether that's coming down to meet with someone, to conduct business, to answer a question, to make arrangements for, you know, whatever that next step in the service is. So CDD, entirely different level of service, that they would have their own kind of customized plan. The idea is that we, we don't want anyone to come to any of our facilities and feel ignored or lost, or not knowing what they would need to do to receive service, of whatever kind that might be. So we would have, again, a tailored approach for each one of our buildings, including health, which is probably the most complicated, with multiple locations, multiple services, to, so that we are able to meet their needs immediately and as quickly and as efficiently for both them and staff as we can. So that would be, you know, up to us to create that kind of customized messaging with the direct involvement and assistance of each of the departmental locations.
Mr. DeBonne, did you have any further comments?
So I like the concept that we're open for business. I want to make sure there's no doubt about that. If we're going to set up a, a single phone number, I would advocate to make sure that a person answers it on the first or second ring, and, you know, not always possible. But not put a, a menu in front of it is the first thing somebody hears. You know, the possibility of somebody hearing a voice right away. And this could just be a couple of weeks, as I say. And this is where we're all struggling with, what is this going to look like? But for right now, I do support that. And I, you know, I did on Monday.
Well, I'm in favor of the idea we do it for a period of time. We're, say, for the next X...
Yeah.
We're in the middle of a week, so maybe it's...
Well, just...
Two and a half, through the week after, you know, for two and a half weeks, we, we're going to do this until we get, kind of get an update, and then we may extend it or whatever. But I, and I totally agree with what you're saying, Commissioner DeBonne, about, let's have a person there, no phone call, and it's quick, you know, and maybe it's a backup person, like, you know, we used to do in offices where one person is supposed to respond, and if they're on the phone, somebody answers the phone. So, and, but I don't think it should be, I don't know if it needs to be countywide, because that sounds kind of like dispatch, you know, using 911. It seems like it'd be building oriented, so each building, yeah.
Oh, very much so. Yeah, I agree.
So we would have somebody in this bill, you know, and it looks like only some of the buildings would have it. It'd be the ones where it's, it, they may need access by appointment or by accompaniment. So we would just pick those. But I'd say, you know, maybe two and a half, or, two and a half would end on a week, two weeks, three weeks, something, just so we're, because I notice that's what the state of Washington did is, with their rule, they said, we're going to do for the next two weeks, we're going to do it. They may lengthen that out, but it's not the indefinite. I think it causes a lot of anxiety.
It's a good idea.
That way, people know we are still doing what we're hired to do, within, you know, and the departments are.
Well, I, I imagine we're going to, we'll keep meeting on coronavirus generally, almost at every meeting that you have. I think we may go to one meeting per week, but we'll revisit this at each meeting. And if, if we begin hearing complaints from citizens that they're being, feel ignored, or that their needs aren't being met, then we can revisit this at any time and just continue to monitor and see how it goes.
Some citizens think we should be closed.
Yeah.
Then again, we have 80% of what we do is essential, and I do need, I think we need to recognize that. It's, it's our responsibility to our, our residents of Deschutes County that we do need to be open. Commissioner Henderson?
See, I, I kind of agree with the way you say we can revisit, but I don't want to rethink it every time. So I, I want to say we're going to do something, do it, and then we can, if we have mechanical things about, gosh, can we have another person answering? I've heard complaints about this or that. But I don't want to change it on Monday or change it the following. I want to give it some time. There, it's, because I think it's going to be divisive. There are people, I know that there's people that don't like the shutting down of things and the, they're not going to like it. But then, like Commissioner Derr said, there's other people who are just as adamant, well, we should be shut down. We're not following this or, you know, but, so it's kind of, it's going to be a call that isn't popular necessarily with, you know, either side. So as they say about compromises, sometimes that's a good sign that you're doing a good job, as nobody's happy. But do our best.
Do we need a motion on this?
Oh, I think probably a general motion that, you know, that allows for, you know, selected building adaptation to customer service with, over a two and a half week period, I think would provide some certainty, and then we'll begin implementation today, immediately.
Okay.
With, with notice, of course.
All right.
Well, I'd, I'd move that we approve the kind of general matrix that's been provided to us by department as a, but we change the wording to where it's no, and then it has something that goes, yes, but by appointment only, yes, by accompaniment, and work out those details, and kind of get that, that system set up. Did I see, yeah, the road department. There's only, it looks like about six, six departments, seven departments, would, maybe more than that, would actually, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, but even the eight. So eight are currently, but maybe the departments need to relook at it as, are they yes, but appointment? So like, for instance, the sheriff's offices all knows, but really, you're a yes, but by accompaniment. I mean, so it's, you're, the front door's closed, but the office and, and you, if, if I need to talk to someone in your office, I can, as a citizen, I can still do it, but I'm probably either going to have to be accompanied, or I need to make an appointment with Sergeant so and so, or is that kind of, so we need to look at that wording to make sure that it matches what we really want to do.
No one that comes to our door is turned away.
That's what I thought, yeah.
They absolutely want to come into the building. That's...
That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
Well...
So we might want to revisit with the departments, is this what you really want to have happen? As if it, because it...
But then sometimes someone does come to our building that are not allowed in because of a restraining order. Do we not have that situation? Is that like a special little asterisk, or do we have to address that at this time?
They wouldn't get the appointment.
Oh, right. I know, I know. Well, I'm just... Yes, they're...
Uh, this is Tony. I was just off for about two minutes. The phone just dropped right out, and I was able to dial back in, just for about two minutes, it looks like.
Were you there when I, I made the motion? Did you hear that?
I heard the beginning, I heard the beginning of the motion, and then it dropped.
So I, I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Yep, I'll second it. I heard you state that use that matrix and maybe fill it out a little bit more specific about the actions, because that could be the tool that we review a couple of weeks from now. So I do like that.
Any further discussion?
So I really appreciate the departments having worked hard to do this. It's, their answers, I didn't get through all of them, but they're really complete. And, and I suppose we'll fashion a message to the public sometime, so.
Yes.
Eric, did you want to address what I was talking about?
Yes. You asked about if an individual has a trespass notice to not be able to enter one of our buildings. The trespass notice has direction for that person to, to continue to receive, to receive county services from that building in an alternative way, because even if we trespass somebody, they have a right to our services. So in that trespass notice, we have a contact name, number, email address, where they can contact a person, usually it's me, and then we will, we'll arrange for services to, to be, be provided in a different setting or building.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So direction for going forward, two and a half weeks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And we'll listen to the feedback from our, from our people.
It sounds like, Tom, you need to, you and Eric, or whoever needs to work through the details, there might be a couple of these are a little different, but maybe come up with a new, I mean, I, I think what they're saying is, no, people don't need to just be able to access. And some may, I thought some of them, we don't maybe have any access, because any access is a good policy for those departments. But then there's others where they want to stay. Like the sheriff has said, he wants to be, in the end, accessible, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, I know the clerk had said that she ultimately wants to be accessible, but, but it's not the public without.
Old way, yeah.
Is it, so if we don't want to wait till Monday to put this in effect, can, can we just individually see what you came up with or something, and?
Well, we'll start work on revising this immediately, and, and the matrix, as well as the, what the message could be for each department. And in terms of an effective date, I, I wasn't thinking that we would wait till Monday. I was...
That's what I'm saying. So...
Thinking tomorrow.
But you need to...
Tomorrow, I think we should.
That's what I'm saying. So you want to get the final draft done, and then?
Yeah, we'll try and get that out by the end of today, and certainly by tomorrow.
Excellent, because it's, we need to have it effective tomorrow.
And, and something that will help the commission out, and Tom as well, is that each individual officer department will have a very good idea about what they can do on those inner workings. So it, it should speed it up for you all.
Yeah. That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
Are we now to external communications?
I, I just, I wanted to check in with you. It's almost known, we have a, a couple of items. I, I know the sheriff, you had asked for the sheriff to hear from him directly on the vacation item.
Oh, yes.
And so I, I don't know if you want to move that one up, but I also didn't know if the sheriff, you wanted the sheriff to be part of the discussion on, on external...
I called out there? You fucked up.
Somebody needs to mute who's on the line.
It's going to be so much better in six months.
Yeah, I think so, too, the technology.
To start, just something, and I, I got an opportunity to visit with all of you about it, and I, I always appreciate the back and forth conversation. But one of the things the sheriff's office is doing is that we have removed the maximum vacation cap requirement and set the review date through the end of the calendar year. And then we also removed the requirement, number of vacation hours to be used in order for sellback. And that is through the end of the calendar year as well.
So that's through the end of June, June 30th, then?
Calendar year.
You're saying calendar year?
Yeah, so until... Yep, December 31, 2020.
I was thinking fiscal year.
No. And then, and then we can re, then our office is going to review it, and we can make some recommendations. But the idea is not to increase the cap with no end date. The, the idea is, is to offer some relief, because we actually have some teammates who chose not to take their scheduled vacations and, and came to work. And so we don't want folks worried about that vacation cap right now and needing to use those hours, and we also don't want them worried about that in the context of a buyback program.
Commissioners, did you receive the inter-office memo with the additional information on the request to delay the annual TML and vacation accrual limits?
We, it was in our box.
It was in your box this morning, yeah. And so this was just a little bit of additional information, kind of just to build upon the sheriff's comments there. I put together a little bit of information regarding kind of what this looks like countywide with all of our unions, and whether or not this should be a consideration for everyone, all, all the unions at the county, or nonrepresented folks as well. So the request is to delay the annual TML and vacation accrual limits. Every year, we review it, review the accruals, and if they're over max, there's sort of two areas that the accrual, the overages fall into. And one is a sick bank, and the other is that there are some of our representative employees that their contract requires them to forfeit those hours instead. And so just looking at that, kind of around the county, many folks were, were sort of scheduled, primed to do this, March 31st. So this is the work that we're doing right now. And, so we're just sort of looking for direction, if this is something for consideration for the entire county, to postpone, and if so, for how long the work to be done on any overages above the annual vacation or time management accrual limits.
So if this is postponed, does that postpone the conversion time also?
The sellback time?
Yeah.
It, I don't think it would. The current plan would be that we would continue with the sellback option, mainly because that's very far along in process. It would be a little bit more difficult to undo that. So some folks may already be taking care of any overages through a sellback option. They're not required to do it.
So those don't, one doesn't trigger the other. It's, those are choices.
Right. So one, if they choose, if there, there's eligibility requirements around sellback too, so not everyone is... so not everyone is eligible for sellback. If they are, many will use that option to reduce any overages. If that is not an option for them, depending upon where, what their contract allows, it would either be, like I said, that overages would be transferred into a sick bank, which has requirements on when and how you access that, or would be forfeited.
Um, well, I think to provide equity, that we go throughout the entire organization at this point. If we're going to move, you know, a section of our employees to a later date, because the impact is, is pretty great around the entire organization, then we should consider that throughout the entire organization.
So it's, it's a nine-month extension of the, that part of the...
Do you know, do you have any idea of the fiscal impact?
Um, I don't. We looked at how many people were sitting in the overages, and there was a handful. It wasn't actually that many, but it does range from about two hours to 250 hours that folks have in terms of overages. There are some options that could be considered. For instance, rather than it being sort of held, it could be those who would be forfeiting, it could roll into a bank, but that doesn't necessarily address the issues where folks aren't able to take a vacation out of the work that they're doing in response to, to COVID-19.
That was really our goal, was to give people flexibility to be able to help out where needed, or work when, for immediate things, and put off these decisions till later in the year.
Right.
There's not really a fiscal impact in that, in that we're not granting additional vacation leave to anybody, it just...
We're just extending.
Extending the use it or lose it deadline on, on when they could have it, either use it, or have it, or be paid for up to a certain amount, or have it roll into a sick bank, so that their leave isn't even taken away losing it, it just, it goes to a place where they can't use it any longer for vacation, but it's part of their sick bank that would be...
How does it affect next year's application of the whole plan? Is it, does that turn into a three, I know I asked this the other day, I can't remember what you said, but does that end up in being a three-month decision period next year, real, is that different, or is it affected?
No, I, I mean, the plan would still be that you have to meet the requirements for, to be eligible for sellback, and then that maximum would still hold true in terms of us looking at this in, in March next year. And then just to clarify, we do have three of our unions who aren't eligible, Tom, for the sellback, and so they do have, they actually do...
We lost Tony.
Oh, no. Probably because this room is so cold.
What's your recommendation, Tom?
Well, again, I, I agree with Kathleen's comment that consistency is important, so I would, and for the benefit of those, I know Sheriff's Office has, I'm sure in many cases, suspended vacations and, and put some of his people at work who, who might not be able to take a vacation that they had planned. Certainly in, in the Health Services Department, we have many people...
Welcome to the conference group. Please enter your passcode, followed by the pound key.
...working long hours, and that, you know, to the extent that some of them may have had vacations, they, in order to use it before losing it, to provide that extension, I think is a fair and, and a positive thing to do for those folks.
So we're actually talking about almost 50% of our workforce, then, between health and the sheriff's office?
Is Commissioner DeBonne on the phone?
I can put him on my speaker on my cell phone, if that's easiest.
No, no.
Yeah, the assumption here, I, I'd asked the sheriff previously about, you know, the, doing it till the end of the year, and I guess his, what was it, that just makes it simpler, and we're not rethinking this in three months? I keep thinking, I'm optimistic that, well, this'll be solved by summer, but we don't really know.
Easter.
Well, the president, yeah, the, you know, the president said Easter, but that's, seems really close, two, two weeks, two and a half weeks.
Nineteen days or something?
Hey, Tony, it's Tom. We lost you on the cell phone, I was just gonna...
What do you think about the timeline?
I was gonna put you on my speaker on my cell phone, if that's...
Well, consistency seems important, and the fact that it is over 50% of our workforce, and they are really under incredible pressure at this moment, I, I, it seems to be only consistent.
We have you, Tony?
I am, yes. So I was watching the video, and I think we got that 10, 15, 20-second delay again, but I, I'm on the audio of Tom's cell phone.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
So Commissioner DeBonne, did, um, did you get a chance to, will you talk to the sheriff about the, what he was suggesting, and that Kathleen has said she really feels that we should give it across the board, just to be equitable and fair in this situation?
Uh, we're referring to...
Vacation accrual?
Bank or rollover?
Yes.
Yeah, I support that. Uh, yeah, you know, we did talk about it Monday, it was good that we had time to digest what that is, but yeah, let's, let's put that in place. So what are the specifics about that that we're talking about now?
The specifics would be that currently, our process, or our regular process would be March 31st, we would evaluate where everyone's maximums are, and any overages, we would address accordingly based on contract language or policy, and those would either be put into a sick leave bank or forfeited, depending upon the contractor policy. And the, what we're recommending...
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question about that, Kathleen? When you talk about forwarded, or, uh, what specifically are you talking about? Are you talking about that some associations don't have a buyback program, and so therefore hours will be forfeited, because they're not, they, they're unable to sell them back?
The sellback would be, is a separate option. So this is that every March 31st, we review the, the limit of, the limit that's allowed or identified in a contract, union agreement, or a policy on how much vacation, what your maximum accrual is.
Right.
So let's say it's 360 hours that happens to what DCSA says.
Right.
At, at this period of time, we would look at that, and if you are sitting at a bank of 400, those additional hours for the DCSA contract would be forfeited.
So, I, I'm sorry, thank you. That, that's all the clarification I, I need, unless I misunderstood. Look, I, I'm not trying to cause an issue here, but the commissioners have declared an emergency. These are extraordinary times, they require extraordinary measures. And no offense to the collective bargaining units, but what the sheriff's office is doing is we are going to give folks extra time to use those hours, and we'll maintain and check in, because the office does not want those to stay on the book forever. The other thing that we're going to do is we're gonna honor the sellback program. So if there are folks that were unable to use the time required for the sellback program, we're gonna honor that, and they will be expected to use that time. We'll work with county HR and, and get some input and advice on how much extra time that we need to use for that, but in no way will we violate a collective bargaining agreement, but we're also going to, to do what I feel is the right thing. And so I'm just trying to simplify that for you, because I, you know, Kathleen does a good job explaining that info, but sometimes I need to do a double check and ask myself what, what we mean, but that's what we're going to do. You all have been great partners, I'd encourage you to do the same, but respect if, if you have a difference of opinion.
Was, so Kathleen, was what you were talking about the same as what Sheriff Nelson was talking about?
Correct, so, so we're at the period of time where we would be evaluating those overages, and we're essentially suggesting the same as what the sheriff is planning for his group, is that we would delay that process and allow folks to have extra time to utilize that, and still move forward with the sellback option as well. And if there is an impact, you have to use one of the requirements of sellback, that you use a certain amount of hours before. If that was not, we often see kind of a higher utilization during February and March to, to meet that eligibility, and if for some reason you weren't able to due to the response of this, that we allow that sellback to continue. So exactly what the sheriff has just discussed there.
But I'm in favor going forward with the, the proposal, I, because I think there's just, it's gonna be hard to treat different departments differently, or different associations differently. I mean, it's gonna be, it seems like we're at the front end of what we've declared as an emergency. We don't know how long it'll be before the back end is, and it makes sense to, there's clearly some departments that, you know, where I think employees definitely need it, maybe others, but we really can't predict one versus the other. I mean, so, we'll have some surprises of ones that maybe get busy, so I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Can you make a motion for that?
Commissioner DeBonne, what's your opinion? Or did you say it already?
He said he's in his favor.
Okay, okay, well, I'm...
Yeah, I'm supportive, you know, I guess there's, there's ways to look at this, there's could be a lot of detail, so that's the only thing I'm thinking of, is, you know, how much, how many hours are we talking about, you know, the sheriff's office opposed to other groups, how, what kind of a timeframe, you know, I, I'm not real clear on the whole big picture. I'm supportive, but, yeah.
But the, the motion just...
Or, you know, are we, is it a, a one-year commitment by just doing it right now anyways? You know, just questions.
So it'd be just a motion probably to, um, was eliminate the, the March 31st deadline, or move it back to, how would we word it?
Through the end of the year.
Yeah, right now.
How would we word it?
Delay until the end of the year.
And we're delaying, and what do we call that we're delaying?
Request to delay the annual TML and vacation accrual limit review.
Where are you seeing that wording?
Right here, on the top of this.
On the second memo in, sorry.
Okay, so then, for the end of this fiscal year, or the end of this calendar year?
Okay.
The calendar year is...
Calendar.
Okay, good, yes.
So I'd move...
I didn't know the timeframe for that. So I support that motion.
Well, let me say, let me say the motion.
Make the motion now.
Let me say it, Commissioner DeBonne.
Okay.
I move to delay the annual review of accrued time management and vacation leave banks for employees until the end of the fiscal 2020 year.
Calendar.
Calendar year. Oh, excuse me. I may, I, that's what I was thinking. I said, well, I said it wrong. Banks to employees through the 2020 calendar year.
And I'll second it.
I saw the end of the year in my head, but I said the other...
I said it wrong, there were...
I know, I was just following.
Any other discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
Commissioners, my cell phone works for Tony, but we lost Dave and several of the others, because I guess...
Should we take a little...
So I would, yeah, suggest either we take a short break to get the phone back working, or if you want to take a longer break for lunch, we could reconvene later on, too, and...
We take a lunch, a break until what, 1:00? Would that be okay?
Up to you.
Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Are you okay now?
Yeah, I just, I'm gonna have to go, I apologize, I'm just...
Right, no, but I mean, you, this is what you needed today.
Oh, yes, thank you.
All right, so I think we should...
And if you guys need me later, then just call me.
Okay, we should take a lunch break then, until 1:00 PM. We should take a lunch break then until 1:00 p.m.
For the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Henderson is here. Is Commissioner DeBon joining us on the phone? Are we going to dial in for him again?
I'll send him a text.
Okay.
This door opens when I pull it open. Dave has a conflict at one. He's got to be on a conference call for DOJ emergency lawyer meeting.
Okay. Oh Kathleen, Tom was asking if we could all wear purple gloves.
Hey, this is Tony DeBon calling back in.
Okay, excellent. Thank you Commissioner DeBon for joining us. So we're going to go back to external communications discussion on our agenda. Well, he went out to do that's. Should we, why don't you send him a text? Say we're ready now.
Sharon's better at that. She'll just go back and cuff them on the ear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You got your Meals on Wheels route all lined out Tony?
Joe is doing, Joe DeLuca, Sergeant DeLuca is doing it this afternoon and I'm going to be missing him. I'm going to work with him a little bit.
Actually, to save you from embarrassment, I think he's a lieutenant now.
Lieutenant DeLuca.
Sorry, what was?
I think Joe's a lieutenant now.
Captain, I'll just call him whatever. Joe, I know him as Joe.
Okay. Well, what did he say?
Do you want me to start or?
He's coming now. Yes.
Okay. So we wanted to touch base with the board. There have been a couple elements that touch on public communication that we wanted to come back and discuss in today's meeting. One of them was the video concept that Commissioner DeBon had brought up during the Monday meeting. Another one is some messaging coming out of the Joint Information Center that we've been asked if we'd like to participate in in terms of having you do some PSAs and some voice-overs for some campaigns. And then the third, just because as a dovetail to this morning is that we will be putting together materials announcing facility modifications later today. So that is my plan to get that ready. So I was gonna, if it's helpful, provide an overview of some of the things that have come out of the Joint Information Center if, and would be available as options for us to pursue. Would that be helpful? And then we could, that might kind of help inform our conversation around potential video and other messaging needs. Is that a good place to start?
Excellent.
Okay. I'm going to hand out a draft of a script for a public service announcement. And Commissioner DeBon, I sent you a photo of this draft momentarily. This is similar to messaging that other elected bodies, Crook and Jefferson County and local cities are putting out. And the intent would be to have multiple elected officials representing multiple areas sharing this unified message. There's also a draft video that we could potentially look at, that I can queue up on the screen if you're interested in looking at it. But these are some of the things that are coming out of the collaborative efforts of the JIC. And one of the other things they pushed out yesterday is they have a great social media campaign and they're offering to, there was a note that came through yesterday, if we could do quotes from each of the commissioners, that would be put on a graphic splash screen and shared broadly across the network. And there are quotes from folks like Becky Johnson and other folks in the community that they're doing, that they're creating those graphics with those quotes from those leaders in our community. And so to the extent that each of you or you as a body would want to be involved in that, that's certainly a way to, you know, communicate our message on behalf of the board. So I don't know if you have thoughts or feedback on this draft, or if you'd also like to see the video draft that's done and then kind of have another, have a broader conversation. What would be helpful?
Can we see the video too?
Yeah, definitely. Do I have to do anything special for sound on Sharon at the podium? I don't think I do. Okay.
I'm Samantha O'Connor with Central Oregon Daily News and we are working with the Central Oregon Emergency Information Network to help spread a simple message: Stay home, stay safe.
I like funeral music.
Remember by staying home, it doesn't just protect your family, it helps protect the entire community. Use the hashtag CentralOregonCares and share how you are helping our community stay strong by staying home.
So, not prevent us from delving into YouTube further here.
Who would like Precious Bird to be doing her music?
I'm kind of serious. It does sound like a funeral.
Would they mind? Do you think they would mind?
I think there's flexibility with that. The thought would be if we use that prepackaged option, and I think we'll see other local elected officials potentially using it, you would be the voiceover. One of you would be the voiceover and your image jointly would be presented at the front. And then that would potentially be airing on local stations. So I just wanted to give you a sense of some of the materials that are being put together and are available to use. And certainly if the board has additional messaging, or I know Commissioner DeBon had some specific points in his initial thoughts about video, those are all options that are in play. I just wanted you to kind of see this draft script and see that as a prepackaged, pulled-together concept to kind of help kickstart the conversation.
So, was that made by the JIC? And so are they, you're saying they're wanting a variety of people across the land to do that?
Yes.
And you're asking whether each of us want to do that too, or?
That's an option, certainly. Doing something in the realm of what you have in front of you on paper, I think is also an option. And certainly we can customize that to be, to meet the board's goals in terms of your messages that you want to get out to the community.
We can't change the music?
I am certainly happy to pursue that.
Okay, hoping we could. But the message that I did.
So, Connaughton, I just like the idea of having a, you know, a nice sharp picture of us saying anything positive. I mean, any bullet point there is good. And, you know, using that front desk with the Deschutes logo and just letting people know we're here, kind of seeing our, in a little bit closer shot. Because as I say, I'm watching this conference from home right now and it's just this room. So that's, so that's my goal. It's just a little bit more personal.
Okay. So it sounds like there's a variety of options in how we could potentially accomplish that.
Well, one would be to take a text like this and we all three appear quickly through it or something. The other would be.
Video.
The video thing, I think, would be different than that. I see that as more of a count, you know, our instigation, not the JIC's instigation about, I don't, I don't really want to just be part of this big team that somebody else creates. I mean, I'd rather there be an independent side for what we do. If we want to join this campaign, that's fine. I think that'd be great. I, I don't know, but the text is fine. It's only, if we're going to read it, I guess one person could do the first two sentences, one could do the third, and the other could do the last two.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of even or something, but.
Is that, is do.
That wouldn't look bad to have all three of us do a.
No, I think it'd be excellent.
You know, kind of.
Definitely.
Not all standing in a room, but like.
Separately, yeah. Is that something that the other commissioners would be supportive of, is potentially, Commissioner Dare, would you?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd be fine with that.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
That's helpful as a starting point. What about other messages that you want to communicate and thoughts that you've had around?
So the video, Commissioner DeBon, did you have specific ideas on the video? You, I got a couple that I've come up with today, but why don't you say what yours are?
Oh, well, I mean, I can't help but just kind of daydream about the, you know, one-hour call-in show with people's questions too. And I'm sure Whitney is probably wincing when I say something like that. But I just want to be available and communicate. That's what I'm, I, you know, people are out there and they're just hungry for information right now. So I'm seeing a little bit of Facebook and, you know, just whatever we can do at this point. And we've got lots of good facts and information.
So just from a marketing standpoint, what if we did something like kind of our own version of frequently asked facts or questions, you know, the FAQ thing that people do, but we do it with the videos that you, that people could put on Facebook, like, why is there not more testing? Or how come, you know, how does the virus spread?
A couple different versions of.
What I'm talking about is something kind of funnier and more clever than the.
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, I guess it's a lag time. What I was thinking of was things that were kind of maybe funnier, or clever, rather than just public service. Something that would actually, somebody would say, well, let's pass that on with video, on my Facebook or whatever, little clips. We could do some pretty creative ones. What do you think of that?
I do. I was thinking about doing one about restaurants, you know, like, gee, great time not to cook. You can go pick up your dinner.
Yeah.
And we've got all kinds of restaurants. You can easily go to websites and see all the restaurants available in our whole community. And, you know, there are, there are a lot of people that are working for those restaurants that I really want to help maintain their job. And so anyways, but we could really make it fun.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner DeBon, did you?
Just answering specific questions, we saw a couple versions of, you know, if I have a delivery job, or if I have a public-facing job and it's, it's not closed down, but I don't feel comfortable, you know, how do we deal with that? So this would be. So this would be kind of that HR/policy/emergency answers opportunity right now.
Okay.
What if, since there's, you know, we all have different, probably, like, I had one about testing, and then the other one was about the spread of the virus. I mean, what, this whole, why are we distancing? Maybe some people don't know that. What if we all created kind of our own, like, yours was on restaurants, create a vision of what you might do? Like, is it pictures of you? Yeah, the, you know, you could do, kitchens closed, Bob.
Yes.
Or, you know, we could do, I could think a clever, that would be funny to see. I mean, that might be, I wouldn't mind that being profiled that way. And we could all come up with our own ideas and pass them on to you, and we could...
Yeah, we can coordinate.
And by Monday, we could...
I'd love to work on that and happy to, whatever works best, email, just send me your ideas and we'll get that rolling.
I actually called Gumper's Distillery today and thought it would be appropriate to leave them a message that they're out of their fabulous Pinawah gin. And I'd given it for gifts to people, and they're calling me and telling me that their gin, their, it's, the bottle is empty. And so, I thought Michael might appreciate hearing that. So, you know, we have this whole industry in our, in our community that's, you know, suffering.
Perfect. Well, I will wait to kind of see those concepts come through, and then we will coordinate them and come up with a plan that we can discuss more in detail on Monday, if that sounds good.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Fully develop mine, but...
Yes, I'll have to think really hard.
Okay. And I'm happy to help think hard as well, if it's helpful, so.
Thank you, Whitney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we, I just put a bunch of kind of other items, quick updates on there that wanted to make sure that you all were in the loop on. So we've, there's several events that we've been thinking on that are scheduled soon that we wanted to run by and make sure that we're kind of on the same page. So, we already talked about the Stabilization Center a little. Eric's here, I'm not sure if Lee's on the line also.
I think he's almost out of the room then, maybe.
But, no, I think he was here. The, we were talking about drywall. But because of the social, although construction is allowed to continue under the state order, the, the construction firms are still supposed to use social distancing wherever possible and practicable. So the CalCon, the contractor, had asked for, you know, in order to incorporate that into their construction schedule, they believe it'll cause a couple-week delay in the, in the opening, in the, when it's finished. So right now, it's, I think it's the last day of April, so that would push the actual readiness opening to the middle of May, two weeks later, if I captured that properly. But that was kind of a...
Do we have a date yet? In May? I know they were gonna have open party, I think it was on May 1st.
And I'm, Friday, I mean, that can still continue. They just wouldn't be quite finished operation.
I know that they, hopefully, the bus route in Sun River is supposed to be made 21st, if we are so fortunate, is to kick that off in May, so.
Well, yeah.
So for CalCon, I would support that, let them know that, and I'm just throwing out an idea, but we could support them in kind of expanding their, their time or access. I don't know if it's up to us or them, but I mean, if some contractors want to work, you know, swing shifts or midnight shifts, just to, and we, and there's a reason they're not doing that, just to throw that idea out. Because, you know, once they get this project done, there's going to be other stuff to do, too. So just offer it, if they want flexibility, let's try to offer it to them.
We can offer them that flexibility, but the issue is, is the scheduling of the subcontractors and not, and having to limit the number of subcontractors in the building at the same time in order to comply with the governor's order on social distancing.
Well, and that's my thought, you know. An electrician could be working a different shift than a plumber, because I know, we stuck our head in there when we had our annual goals, goal-setting, and they were all on top of each other, you know. There was half a dozen contractors, subcontractors. But if somebody wants to work a, you know, a later shift where nobody else is there, I'm just saying, there may be an opportunity for them to do that. And I'm not forcing them to, just offer it.
It's just hard to get contractors to get their, their employees to want to work from, there's very much construction done, and, but you could do the end sum of it, I guess. I, I was there last week and they just had hung the drywall, and I was thinking it was gonna be hard to make the, I mean, they got a lot to do. But yeah, the finish work tends to be multiple people in there all at once. So if they've got to string it out, which is what the Building Department told me yesterday that they're trying to, that's kind of the new policy that they're doing with inspections, too. They're doing, instead of lumping them all together, they do one inspection, then the next, and they used to just lump them all together. But I'd be surprised if, I mean, five, two weeks may not be enough, if that's, because there's so many subs at the end, but we'll see. I'm good with extension. I don't think it really matters. Are we, aren't we gonna move back the opening, then, to the when it actually opens, or?
Right.
Well, I didn't hear that specifically. I know the health is in the loop on this. I think George is scheduled to be out of the, well, maybe that's changed. I think he was scheduled to be gone that, on the 2nd, but we'll have to circle back and confirm the, whether the opening date would still be on the 1st or...
Because wouldn't you open it when you have the, the desks in there and the material, all the stuff, or?
Illy, you would think, yeah.
There's a long ways to go.
You chase that down? Yes, I will.
Well, originally, they were saying that we would have the party on, like, May 1st, and that they would hopefully have it all set up so that they could start seeing clients by the 15th. Maybe not that long. That's what Holly's been talking about.
We'll confirm the actual arrangements.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So what are we doing with Fire Free?
Yeah, so I think Ed and, Ed Keith and Tim Schimke may be on the line here. They were gonna call back in, but, so, they've been, along with the committee and Boone, have been kind of thinking on how Fire Free might work with the social distancing protocols, which is, I'm sure you, everybody here has dropped off their debris there, and it's pretty tight and, and so forth. So, wanted to talk about, you know, whether we try and do that or not, and actually, Tim has an alternative idea that might work even better. So, Ed and Tim, are you both there?
This is Ed, I am.
So Ed, do you, do you want to kind of give a rundown of sort of what the thinking is on Fire Free right now?
Sure, I can give that a shot. So in talking to Tim towards the end of the day yesterday, he had a concern with fact that there's typically several thousand people that bring in yard debris during a pressed period of time, and that they wouldn't, for a variety of reasons, be able to really enforce the social distancing, both due to staffing, as well as just the physical arrangement of, of, you know, not being able to lay out cones and things like that, because they are using heavy equipment to push up the pile, those sorts of things. He did offer one possible suggestion to spread that traffic out, is potentially extending Fire Free for the whole month of May. That was the last I had heard from Tim, and I'm not, I wasn't positive, I was hoping he'd be on the line, whether that was for transfer stations and not landfill, or if it was more just the concern of the extreme amount of traffic at not landfill. Just trying to think through, you know, people are home now, they're probably doing some of this work. I've actually talked to people that are doing work and have material building up and...
I think it's great.
So, and Tim also said that evidently Heart of Oregon is kind of suspended operations right now while they, during this time, they're staying at home. So they'd, normally, there would be assistants at, certainly at Not Landfill, to get folks in and out quicker, you know, with the kids helping out. But since it doesn't look like they would be taking part this year, that would kind of stack people, more people up if everybody's kind of doing it themselves with a trailer. So, as Ed said, his thinking was if we just make basically yard debris drop-off free for the month of May, then that would spread out the business in there and enable people to kind of keep further apart in, in what they're doing. Wanted to kind of run that idea by the board and see what you thought.
I think it's an excellent idea. I, I think especially this year, just to give our community something that's not, they're not gonna have to pay, and, and it actually will encourage people to do even a greater job, especially since a lot of people are home now. I'm really happy that that's been the suggestion.
But, just in talking about when we went from one weekend to two, it was like $150,000 more or something?
No, it was, it was 28, 28,000.
It was?
Uh-huh, it was 28,000.
So how much more is it gonna cost to keep it open all, all month?
For free.
Get Tim on your cellphone and put it on speaker.
It was 28,000.
Bring in who?
One weekend? Yeah, I mean, this, Tim just, he made the suggestion sort of late yesterday afternoon, so I don't know that he's run all the numbers yet on what that...
Something to think about.
...might do. But I, I think the cost, I mean, if it's spreading that out over a larger period, we don't have Heart of Oregon, I don't know that we had that, that we were, that we knew that Heart of Oregon wasn't gonna be there when we were thinking about those two extra weekends. So unless...
Are they free, or do we pay for them?
We pay.
We have a contract with them.
So, I'll bet we'd be able to get temporary help, though, for that month. You know, Tim could hire five people that worked all month out there, helping do, you know, really, it's not a very, it's not that hard to be socially distanced. I mean, your trucks are all six, seven feet wide, and, I mean, you don't have much, the only contact you really have is with the people helping. I mean, you know, I never interact with, much with the next truck. I mean, you're just doing your stuff and leaving, and, so I just, so I'm not against doing the month, but it just seems like we're still gonna need to hire somebody for that for a whole month, and...
Well, and they're...
It'd be easy to find people, but...
Yeah, I would think so. So...
I, I do it myself, a lot of times.
The reason we're...
I do mine myself, but I'm, but they're out there to help, but they help a lot of people, and they're...
I know they do.
And, and they kind of help you do this, and do that, and go here and go there, and...
So the reason we're bringing this up today, even though we don't have sort of the final numbers for you, is that, I mean, this would typically begin when we start our marketing for the Fire Free weekend and begin press releasing, messaging that.
That'd be great.
We kind of delayed that a little bit to have this, kind of rethink how we do Fire Free. So if we just hold off on that, on the press release, then we can come back, as long as you're okay conceptually with the idea of, of utilizing the full month, we can come back with some, some precise numbers on cost and impact, including the transfer stations at your...
Yeah, the only reason I'm bringing up the cost is because I'm not sure we need to go from all weekend to all month. And, so if it was a lot of money, could we do it not all weekend, but all, not, but all week? Now we're saying, not all weekend, all month. And so, the marketing campaign is, could be that, you know, Fire Free, you know, do the 2020 special all month. But, but I'm not sure you need all months. I mean, if you did all, two weeks, you might, I'm just saying.
This is Ed again. Just to be clear, so that Not Landfill does last entire week plus the two weekends on either end, so...
We've set it up.
The transfer station was just the one weekend, we were, we were doubling to two weekends, but the Not Landfill would be extended from, from nine days, not just a weekend.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Hey, this is Tim.
There he is.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So, my concern is, I mean, it's a tremendous amount of vehicles come through in that 10-day period, particularly on those weekend days. And I'm thinking if we spread it out more, especially if we promote it correctly, we'll have more traffic volumes on a daily basis. We don't have Heart of Oregon. Those guys are really instrumental in helping get people unloaded quickly, and, and that's what allowed us to move a lot faster through there in a short period of time. It's gonna take longer to process people, no matter what, just because we don't have those people. And if we're, if we're concerned, or, I think Legal kind of said, we have to ensure that there's six feet, you know, separation, that's, that's difficult to do. If we're, if we're simply having somebody do a tally on yards coming in, and one or two guys kind of pointing in the general direction where people should go, that's workable. If we need to try and do something like create lanes with traffic cones to make sure people are six feet apart, that's where it gets unworkable. It's impossible with the traffic, have to be in there every couple of hours with a loader pushing the material up and out of the way so there's room for more. That was my concern in making the suggestion, of just trying to spread out that load over more days than 10. We could tough it out, you know, especially if we're comfortable with that kind of leaving, to a certain extent, that distance up to the customer, as opposed to our staff ensuring that there's that distance.
Tim? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, Tim, are you talking about leaving the other, the transfer stations at four days then, but just not at the whole month?
I kind of assumed that if we were gonna go for the month, we'd go everywhere.
Thank you.
Transfer station.
Well, the, the only reason I'm asking about costs is, you know, the federal government is spending $2 trillion, but they're just borrowing all that money. They're not really paying for it, they're just, and they're opening up the Fed, and we can pour money into things, but we need to think about it, and, but we're, if we go into a recession or something as a result of things get worse, then, you know, who knows what? We don't want to just spend, they're, they can break all the rules because they don't have to abide by any, really, and that's what they've just done, so. And it, it's a new, they didn't, a few days, whereas with, you know, the financial collapse, it took them a month or two to spend a trillion dollars. So, we're advancing at the Fed. That's all the reason I'd like to know what it costs to do, you know, I think the need might be to be a longer period, and I don't want to give it up, but I just do think we, maybe Tim could run the numbers. And people are used to having somebody out there, so it's, if it's not Heart of Oregon, it'd probably be somebody, you know, other people that Tim puts on. We talked to him briefly about, you know, could you put on temporary labor, and that there may be people available for temporary labor that weren't, you know, a few weeks ago. So, I don't know, I just think, don't you think we should...
But, again, I think, I think having, trying to reproduce what we have with Heart of Oregon, where most people are actively unloading loads with people, I think that's too close to contact. I think whoever we have out there needs to be away from people unloading. I mean, we can direct traffic, and I, I guess I, I would be hesitant to say to anybody, you need to go in there and help that guy unload, and be in close proximity to those people.
So you want to change, you think we should change the whole process? Could be.
Well, you know, I think it's very much the same, except we're, we're not providing that hands-on help with people unloading. We're, we're directing them into parking spots, and we can try and keep that separation as best we can by that, by doing that. But, yeah, I think it's the kind of a mistake to load up, whether it's Heart of Oregon or other temporary employees, and say, we want six or seven of you guys in there helping people unload, you know, being in close proximity to those people. I think that's what we were trying to avoid.
Well, that was just...
I think there's an opportunity for video again. Think about it, you know, if it's open for 30 days, come early, come late, don't all queue up at the same time. We're only gonna let five cars unload at the same time, otherwise you're gonna be sitting in a queue. You know, there may be opportunities to message this, where people understand what's going on.
But I, I think commissioners are right in that, Tim, in that you could have just some people, just because you're gonna be stretched, have some temps out there, maybe just marking stalls and directing traffic, and just trying to make it a little bit more efficient than kind of a free-for-all.
Yeah.
And it isn't part of the, when we talk about costs associated with Fire Free, isn't part of it is just foregone revenue as opposed to writing a check, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, I guess if we, if we go for a whole month, we may see a whole lot more volume than we have in a 10-day period. I'm, I'm kind of hoping that the volume doesn't change dramatically, just spread it out over more days. I, I could be wrong, and we could get twice as much volume, and that's where the dollars are off to come in and grind that stuff.
Yeah, we usually, I mean, everybody's gonna be home with their kids. They don't want to get out and cut their brush.
Safely cut their brush.
Okay, so again, if...
But you gotta take two, two yards of compost for every dra, load you drop off, you have to buy compost.
So, again, as long as the commissioners are okay with the concept, then we'll, we'll refine it and we'll bring it back next week for kind of a final review.
I, I really believe so. When you look at our weather this year and the fact that we've gotten so little moisture, I, I feel that it's, you know, I guess we could get a blizzard tonight, but I just feel like this is an opportunity for people to really clean up, and the education... I just feel like this is an opportunity for people to really clean up and the education out there about Fire Free and landscaping and it has, um, increased tremendously in the community, so.
Well, be, yeah, I think that's true, but on the other hand, you know, the Forest Service is not doing their prescribed burnings, so we've, we're not longer worried about forest fires, we're worried about coronavirus. So we've moved to the next thing, we're not, so we'll see, I, I think it'll be interesting to see how many people respond this year, it might be, I think it'd be more, but-
Yeah, I support reviewing the plan next week.
Me too.
Okay, um, so, uh, next item is the property auction, so that's scheduled for, um, May and as, if you've seen it, you know, it's in this room and involves a lot of people in close proximity, so, um, our thinking is that we would, uh, we'd like to delay it, uh, we did take a look at, um, doing electronically, like a remote auction, um-
We could do it on the Farm Channel.
Yeah.
They have, they have farmers on there all the time.
We just, you know, um, I'm, I'm thinking that, that, uh, you know, we, we have pretty limited capacity between just Deborah and I as the property management team right now, uh, to kinda noodle through that, even though our new manager's gonna start next month, so we thought it, it, I mean, we, we could still consider that, depending on how long this thing goes, um, in July, but, uh, our, our thinking was, uh, that we would simply delay, um, the auction for two months to allow, you know, things to pass and for people to do what they would normally do in advance of the auction, a lot of which is, you know, standing at the CDD counter or the assessor's counter, getting background information on properties before they might entertain, uh, the idea of a bid, so just to kinda limit all of that and, and allow it to be as efficient as possible, that was our thinking there.
Great.
I wonder if July is too soon to plan, maybe it should be September or something.
Yeah, it, it's a great point, and we, we actually thought of that, you know, if we push it till later on, then, you know, we do these every year because we, we have kind of a, a stock of properties and, and, uh, we thought, well, if we push it too far out, then we, uh, you know, we, we'd kinda back into next year's auction, which would presumably be at the same time. So there's, yeah, there's nothing magical about July and we could, can certainly, probably confer with, um, our new property manager once, uh, she's on board, which is a week from Monday and, and, uh, kinda pick a, a better date that may be opportune, and I, you know, this is kinda out of my, uh, experience level, but, you know, I, I'm not sure why May is typically the date or if that's embedded in the rules somewhere, all counties typically have them around the same time and all of them, but two, we understand, have, have delayed theirs, so, you know, whether there's some rules that we must follow in terms of, uh, you know, scheduling, you know, we'll, we'll take that into account before we come up with a final date, but anyway, the, the immediate action would be delaying the May auction.
Definitely.
Is there a requirement to have, uh, an auction at all, are there any rules about that? Cause it may be just slip it for a whole year, just, just withdraw and do it next year.
There's no requirement that we have one, in fact, there were a number of years where we didn't have one, um, we didn't have many properties. I mean, the idea generally is to try and get them back on the tax roll, uh, and into, you know, private hands as soon as we can, but there's not, um, and I, we know that there's at least a couple, three properties on this year's list that people are very interested in, you know, the one that we added just a couple of weeks ago, you all remember, uh, here on the North End of Bend and there's a couple other in South County that, um, we know will generate quite a bit of interest, so, um, it's a, it's, it's certainly a thought, but our thinking was just kinda getting past the, uh, worst of the pandemic-
Yep. Yeah, well, yeah, I'm just, I'm open as, thinking as far as possibly delaying the whole thing for a year, but, uh, we don't have to, I'm not pushing that either.
Right, um, unless there's anything else on those, the next item was, um, board communications and, and, um, as, uh, you may know, uh, our past practice has been, um, especially with past boards, to try and kinda provide a staff assistance to the commissioners in uh, drafting responses to certain, um, citizen emails that come in that are addressed to the board, and I know this particular board, uh, likes to respond more than past boards, which is great, and, and we certainly don't wanna, uh, slow that down if that's your preference, but, uh, since the volume has of emails coming in and Phil mentioned it earlier today, uh, related to the coronavirus, we just, we wanted to check in with you and see if you would like our help, uh, as opposed to kind of responding on your own, if there are certain emails that you would like us to, say, uh, prepare a draft for or to do research for you or to respond on behalf of you, any of those are kinda on the table, so we wanted to kinda, uh, see what your thinking was and if we can help in any way with those.
I'd be glad to have that, I mean, I've, I'd just soon have somebody write drafts for all my emails, but, by and large, I mean, from a time standpoint. So, but yeah, these specific ones we're getting right now on this issue, they're somewhat redundant, like, and I was gonna talk about those because there's, there was a question that we had and then we've, I've got, yeah, there's several just the last couple of days that are all kinda substantive, we almost have to decide as a group, what are we gonna say about them? Cause they're gonna, we may get hit with more about, like, should golf courses be open? You know, and so-
The governor said they could be.
I know, but people are, you know, think we're irresponsible, the guy, Widgie, was it the Widgie Creek guy said we're, he's gonna hold us responsible for anybody that dies as a result of it.
So, and I imagine there's, there's gonna be conflicting ones where the-
Well, there, yeah.
Tell you to, you gotta shut everything down, the next person will tell you, yeah.
Well, like the building thing, that's, I, that's what I was saying there, that there's strong feelings both ways, and so, yeah, uh, be a good, this would be a good issue to do it on.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be in favor of, and then we could all, what do you think of that? I, I like the idea of somebody working out that, but-
It is, would be helpful.
Okay.
So, because we got one today at noon, I saw one that was wondering why we're shutting everything down and how, that it hurt the business when we live in this healthy area with very few cases. Exactly the opposite of what the hospitalist said yesterday, and, but a feeling that I'm sure a lot of people have, that-
So you're thinking, and Tony, I don't wanna get in front of you if you had comments.
Uh, my only thought is that, uh, yeah, sometimes we get an email to board and if one of us responds or two or three of us respond, somebody's getting a couple responses, which is wonderful, but that one time that we, that everybody thinks somebody else did it, oh, what a shame, you know, if somebody doesn't get a response, so, a little more coordination would be wonderful.
We have, for example, that, that, there's a feature on our website now that allows, uh, somebody, a viewer to click a button and then they can specify whether it goes to the board or to admin, uh, and Whitney and Laura kinda coordinate that, and when we get one that comes to admin, and they're actually probably more frequent than the ones that come to the board, um, whoever responds to say, I got this, and then we'll copy admin in our response, so we all know that we're kinda coordinating that someone has responded, so, for-
I didn't know that, I didn't know that you did that system, so.
Yeah. So what we could do, and this is kinda where, um, we could use your direction again, um, we could prepare a response and send it to all three of you and you three could determine who it should come back from, uh, we could run it through Patty as the board chair, we could, um, you know, if you have a, any other ideas or one of you could jump in and say, I like, you know, I'd like to be the respond, responding on this one or-
Right, I, I know that, I'm sure the Commissioner DeBonne and Commissioner Henderson are gonna wanna be part of that, the decision making.
You're gonna get a lot of these, so there's, there's gonna be a lot of-
Well, I think we've got more board emails than last week than I think I've gotten in any other week since I've been here.
Yeah.
It's, it, and we may get more, and people have more time as well, I don't know if anybody else noticed that the internet's working slower, like at home, ours, I notice was, so.
I couldn't even get on American Air.
Well, here's, well, as we're on, the kinda communications emails, so here were the things that came up, um, you know, this week that I was wondering if, you know, one was, we got a couple on golf courses, so, is that some, you know, do, would we talk in a meeting like this because the three of us can, are all here saying, we have a board position on this or we have independent positions, I mean, some obvious things like we're not in charge of golf courses and the, we, you know, some people would say we do have the authority to shut down entities. I heard, well, I think I heard that today from somebody on the, oh, I know, on that county call, someone had the opinion that certain business, a county could close down certain businesses that they wanted.
Oh, yes.
So, so-
They were referring to marijuana operations and, um, what it, what they felt-
On the Idaho, Idaho border, yeah.
So the, the cities were able to, the mayors of cities could actually discontinue having marijuana open over on the Idaho border.
So, do, so we've had two people, one about Widgie Creek and the other ones-
There was another one about Eagle Crest and the apartment, or the, the townhomes next to his and they were coming in with rentals and how can we let people still continue to rent those, um.
So, and you got that one and you forwarded that one to CDD, and so CDD then took it and they've been working with Legal to see what the authority is, but I, so if, and that's fine if you wanna do, that's great, um, but if you could maybe copy me or copy one of us, then we know and we don't duplicate effort and kinda researching the same-
Copy anymore.
Same thing, and likewise, if you respond to a citizen, um, you know, either put board in the, in the, in the CC line or in the BCC line and so that way we know that it's, uh, been addressed.
I don't actually know how to do a BCC, I've never done it since I've been here.
Can you do it?
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't pop up on my computer.
Doesn't mind either.
But if you go to that, hit the two button and then, then the, the other screen comes up and then you plug a name in there, you, that's where the BCC shows up.
Oh, really? Cause I didn't think we were allowed to.
I thought that too.
So I just never thought of it.
Yeah.
I've noticed that we didn't and everybody else does and it's like, yeah.
I thought we were not allowed.
That's what I thought. Well, so how do we, so this is kind of a, you know, we could just all respond with our personal thoughts on golfing.
Oh, my gosh.
Like, I'm surprised-
Golfing down.
Well, you know, I'm surprised people say it's hard to social distance, it's one of the easiest sports you do to social distance, you can go around the whole course six feet. The only place you're not so distancing is cl, carts.
Well, no, when you're on the putting green, when you're-
No, that's not true, you can stand six feet away from people on a putting green, it's easy.
Okay, it's easy.
It's a huge area, I mean, the only place is the carts and so be, the, the rule could be that you have to take separate carts if you're gonna golf, I mean, that would be an automatic thing.
Walk.
Or walk, not, some people walk still, but there's a lot of people take carts, but, so, my off-the-cuff response to somebody that says that's a, I think it's more, it's like we're fiddling while Rome burns, we're golfing while, that's what I think is making some people upset, is that we're, people are out there golfing.
They're golfing, they're supposed to be able to fish and the forests, um, are still open.
Well, that, yeah, and that was a thing that Lucas said that I was surprised at when he said you shouldn't go hiking, how much more isolated you can be than hiking unless you got somebody with, you know, I don't know, that was just weird.
Only the campgrounds are-
There has been mixed messages, I've heard, you, you can hike, but hike around your house, don't drive somewhere to go hiking.
But why would, yeah, that just doesn't, I don't get it with that, those are clarifications, but so what do we do with golf, Patty?
Oh, my gosh, we have to allow it.
I thought you-
Do you want me, I would, I won't say what would happen to me if my husband couldn't golf, he's not gonna golf.
If, if, if you were to say, uh, okay, for staff, Tom, Whitney, we'd like draft responses, what, what I would probably say on that one would be, um, it wasn't prohibited as part of the state directive, we, we understand your concern, we acknowledge it, however, you know, we, we believe that that particular activity complies with, uh, you know, the directive on social distancing and although we'll continue to evaluate things on an ongoing basis as things change, uh, at this time, we're not prepared to initiate that kind of, uh, request, cause I don't know that we have the authority to shut down a golf course, um, you know, until further notice.
So what if you just did a draft and then, because these are really policy statements, then we can run it by everybody and within a day or two and say, okay, that looks good, let's send it out to anybody else that comes in the golfing category.
Wouldn't say it in the policy statement, but the fact, it does still bring in money into the-
Yeah, we're trying not to close any more businesses than we have to, and it's, uh, yeah, that's, I agree with that. And the people that have the golf courses also have a lot of the resorts who have, nobody's staying in the rentals and stuff or review.
So we're, we're happy to do that and then we, we can, we'll send a draft back to all three of you and then, um, then I guess it would be up to you three to decide who it comes from, unless you wanna, um, discuss it further, in which case we'd have to bring it back to the next.
Well, and you could even say it if, if you bring it up like here and we, we're kinda unanimous in what we think, you could say, you know, the board's talked about this at a policy meeting, this is how they feel. There could be another one where it said, you know, each board member has different opinions, but this is where we are or something, you know, it seems like everyone has to be kinda custom crafted if we're gonna end up using it multiple times.
Oh, and I agree, uh, completely with that, it's just the mechanics of how we, we get it back to you, so we'll send you back a draft as soon as it's ready and then, again, whether you, you could respond to us and say, you know, let's, that looks good, or I'd like to send it, I defer to someone else to send it, or I'd bring this back to our next meeting to discuss further, you know, any of that, or if you have changes, we can incorporate those and then re-submit it to you.
That would be so helpful though to, to, okay, so like golf courses and then the phone call that I received today was from Chloe Hughes from Sisters and apparently a letter was sent out by, from Kyle Collins regarding the Roundhouse Foundation and three properties that were going to be, a project was going to be implemented and they were only given ten days in order to send back their comments and because of the virus, people are not getting their mail, they're not walking a couple blocks to get their mail, they don't feel safe out there and, um, and then the other people that have to get their mail at the post office in Sisters don't wanna walk inside and get their mail, so they're wondering what is it we are going to do because of our very unique-
Notice requirements and things, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, so some of that we would have to, um, are embedded in our procedural code on, on notice periods and, and things like that. I, I know Nick was tracking some possible, um, um, allowances from DLCD on, and, and I'm, I, I wanna say that they didn't end up going there, but I, I'm not sure if there's-
I think the legislature's talking about, I think that was in Finley's list of things that's in front of that, that joint committee on, um, they're looking at some of those timelines, I think. I thought that's where I saw it. Anyway, yeah.
I'll have CDD follow up with-
Okay, Sharon has already given this information to CDD, cause, cause Chloe called both of us, but I just thought it was like something- Okay.
Can you still hear, Tony?
Yes, I'm on mute, of course, uh, yeah, she called my desk and I sent an email to Nick also already on that.
Another one that's come up is fires and smoke and so, one is that I wouldn't be surprised if we get some comments about the Forest Service decisions not doing prescribed burns on one side, the other side is the people that want no more burns and think we got a complaint letter from somebody that people were burning their leaves or, and they shouldn't be doing that in this-
Well, they had eighteen fires get away this last week.
That's what they said, I don't-
It was on the news.
Those are regulated by the fire districts.
And so, those are the kinds, I mean, fire and smoke and, you know, that's another category of questions, um.
So, um, yeah, and, and so any we've got, and I've got, I've been sort of trying to gather a list, there's the Eagle Crest one, Rick Miller and, um, on shutting down rentals and I know Nick's already working on that.
There was a request from that, from Sun River also, did you get that one? About shutting down rentals?
There was one, there's, uh, the Widgie Creek Golf, yeah, Mary Condi-
Yes.
Has sent you a couple on, um, uh, there was a pretty big list of things that she wanted shut down, but vacation rentals was part of them, so, um, that, that, again, we wouldn't, that would be more of a, sort of a social messaging to request that, we don't have a code provision that allows us to shut down vacation rentals, in fact, we don't even regulate vacation rentals unless they're in a destination resort, unlike, because of tourism has been, you know, overnight rentals and, and, uh, second homes has been an industry here for decades, and that has come up before- Now, that has come up before and whether we should regulate vacation rentals like the city of Bend has done to space them out, but as of now, we don't have that, that authority in code. And we've got one, oh.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So there was actually, um, a more general one on golf courses from Brian Opast who wants all of them to, oh, no, his is the opposite. He wants the one golf courses to stay open.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
We want a thank you letter from Commissioner Dare on that.
Yes, please. I will write him a handwritten note.
Actually, he, he wrote it in a double negative, so I was right the first time. He, he wants them all shut down.
Oh, all of them shut down?
Yeah.
Oh, Brian. My husband gets seven miles of exercise walking the golf course.
So just today in the paper, both of the main headlines could generate this. One's the law enforcement, enforcement split on response. So we could get complaints one way, that way, or the other, you know, why is the sheriff doing this and the police department doing this? And then the other ones, health officials have concerns for St. Charles capacity, but the real message was, don't do anything. That, that was the one we got at lunch today was somebody saying that doesn't make sense, so. I don't know if we're gonna have to have comment on those things, but we don't get to people, I mean, I guess one option is we just don't respond to some of those, but I just anticipate those will be both issues.
Hey, Commissioner, this is Shane. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
So any emails regarding sheriff's office response, just feel free to forward, but I, I want to just also let everyone know, all the law enforcement agencies are on the same page. We are focusing on education, which was the governor's office direction that she wanted to see us go. The governor understood that law enforcement has discretion and that voluntary compliance of what was gonna be sought after, so that's the intent. Of course, you will always have some folks that take it to the extreme and break the law and put folks in danger and law enforcement agencies will take action when that occurs, but the focus is gonna be on education.
What, yeah, that's interesting. Um, I heard you say on the, uh, radio show and that's, I think that's good. I wonder if this, but this article is different than what the, that is. Is there, are you guys doing some kind of joint statement or about that? Cause this makes it look like there's this big divide.
Yeah, well, and that's one media outlet and there's been issues with, uh, that journalist before, but I think the KABND, uh, media story is a good one. I, I talked to them this morning. Um, information was shared with all the media outlets and that was the only media outlet that didn't have an accurate representation of the article.
Okay. Good. I'm glad you're still on. Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna mute again. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
So we'll take the ones that we have. We'll prepare draft responses and we'll ship them to the three of you and then we'll wait to hear back on what your, what you'd like to do in terms of either editing or discussion or sending.
Also kind of relay this because it has to do with what I kind of would like to do is we, it'd be worth thinking about whether you can, either Megan or Samantha can do those kinds of things because I think that they could do more connection, at least to my emails. I'd be happy to have, like, right now, I'd be interested in somebody actually going through my emails and just literally cutting out all of the, we're getting so many now about COVID-19 that it's, I don't even know what to read. There's so many and you're, maybe you're getting them all too and it's like, I'd rather have some, one of them go through those and just say, here's what you got, rather than, so. I mean, it's, if you're, and you could do it if you want, but I, I mean, I'm just saying that wouldn't be a bad, this whole thing of responding to emails. I don't know. People in our position didn't use to type all their letters, you know, they just, everybody didn't just sit there and type letters all day. That's not what people did in these positions and now that, that's kind of what we do. I think, I counted yesterday, it was 63. Day four was, I mean, more than that. I, you mentioned the other day you had over 100, so.
That was, yeah, now they're up to about 150.
Yeah, and, and you could use some, but I mean, I just, isn't what people did, everybody didn't just sit and type all day and that's, we're doing a lot of that. Just a thought. I mean, this is a more structural thing.
Sharon's worked with, uh, kind of set up individual help for the commissioners. We can talk there, but if you see one, you know, like these, it, and, and we're not asking you to type, just, I mean, forward it on to one of us and, and for a response and we'll take it from there.
But, I guess I'm just saying, but you're busy too. You've got your other 100, it's so.
I don't mean me personally.
Well, is it going to Whitney?
Laura could be.
We just doing it to Whitney and Laura then or?
Is Laura working from home now?
But she doesn't, yeah, I don't, we don't have much, she has the least knowledge of what we're doing every day.
What about Samantha?
At least I think.
They get help maybe? I know they're, they're excellent. When I get something that has a lot of printing and I just forward it to them and it's so nice. It's all in my box and it's great. It's very helpful.
Okay. Anything to add on that one? No? Okay. So, um, on the temporary leave policy, so we're gonna, um, uh, you put that in place for two weeks. So next week will be two weeks, so we'll be bringing, uh, bringing it back for, just to check in, but there is one, um, new element, uh, that we'll have to incorporate into, uh, a updated version, which is the federal law that required under certain circumstances and paid sick leave, so.
So, um, one of the memos that was in your box this morning was just, it's an informational component on the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. And there are many components of that. Um, it's a federal response. Um, it was signed on, I think, March 18th or 19th, so I say recently. Um, and the, the components that impact the temporary leave policy, there's really sort of, uh, two of them. There's an Emergency Family Medical Leave Act, so we have the existing, you know, Family Medical Leave Act. Um, and the emergency one per, will provide compensation to employees for that. Um, it will be funded by the employer, so employers funding that. He, I will say that since we've been sitting here and since I've written this, the effective date has changed. It's now April 1st, so, um, we are, uh, what I, what I should say is Deschutes County is working on implementing the requirements under, uh, this act and specifically these ones in particular. Um, there's meetings happening with HR and payroll. Um, payroll is actually building into our test system, uh, this functionality to test it. We hope to have communication out soon. Um, Department of Labor just issued its, um, notices, so we are moving pretty much as fast as we can on this and we will provide a, um, either an amendment likely or new policy, um, to go along with the temporary one that we put in place, um, that the board put in place, um, last week. So just to sort of cover what we have here, the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act, I won't go into too much detail here and there's really no policy decisions at this point. If we run into any, we will bring those to the board likely on Monday. Um, at, at this point, it's an additional, um, 12 weeks of FMLA for a qualifying event that they have listed here, which, which actually run pretty close to the, um, scenarios we identified in our temporary leave, um, policy. In addition to the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act, and I will say that.
Before you, are you finished with that one?
Well, I was gonna say that I should mention that it's capped, so it, I mentioned that there's some pay, but I didn't want to get into too much of the details, but it's at two thirds of the employee's regular rate. Um, with, uh, capped at about $200, um, per day, so there are some nuances about that compensation. It's not necessarily a full, full compensation there.
So, but it looks like, if I'm reading this right, that this relates to us as a county that, and in qualifying these limited circumstances where employees unable to work or telework to care for a minor child at the child's school or places care has been closed, so that's everybody. Is there an age limitation on child's age or can this be a 17-year-old?
Um, it, it, well, it does say minor child. There are.
What's that, 21?
So I, I, I think on, under FMLA, I, I'm, um, I wish I had Sue Henderson here, right? She's our expert on this, but I believe it is 18 and under, um, under FMLA and she will, we will.
So that's, that's what I'm saying. So everybody qualifies?
It says minor, um, and.
That's what I'm, but I'm, I know, but I'm, everybody in high school is 18 or under, pretty much.
I will get back to you with exactly that definition.
Because that, that means that any employee could take off the, for six weeks to.
12.
They want. Well, I mean, kids are only out, things are only closed for six right now, but. And are people doing, I mean, so this just passed?
It just passed. It'll be effective April 1st.
And is it, you, you wording here is employers with fewer than 500 employees.
And.
Down to, to one employee?
Currently.
Holy moly.
They are looking, uh, there was discussion that they may do a carve out for small business, 25 and under. Um, to be honest, it's, I'm, I'm not tracking that as close just because.
No, but there's a lot of, you know, the Family Medical Leave Act was always bigger.
It was.
Employers and.
Big difference.
It's a big difference and so there, people could just literally say that's why they needed to take, they get paid for.
There are, and I will point out that, um, the act does allow for tax credits, um, for businesses, um, however, it is against your payroll tax and so that's not included in here because those are not tax credits in which the county can take part in.
Yeah, I know. I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm thinking broader than our county, really. I'm just thinking about the impact on the rest of the economy and small businesses and you know, and that sort of thing about if it's required that this be done. Interesting. Okay.
Well, Commissioner Henderson, does that change your situation?
Oh, you mean I might be gone for a few weeks? Yeah. No, I don't really want to go home and take care of my son.
We'll say that there is a carve out for essential personnel that leave can be denied, not saying that it would be denied, just saying that we have that opportunity.
Doesn't help me, yeah.
Yeah.
That does come into play.
It does.
With certain essential services.
It, it will.
And not being able to grant vacation, everybody wants it because we need to maintain minimum staffing.
But no one can actually take a vacation right now, though. That's the other side.
You can't go anywhere, right?
Unless you wanted to stay home, a staycation.
What was it, hike around your house?
Yes.
Cut the fire, fire free stuff.
You can't go to Hawaii. We know that. That wouldn't be very much fun, so, yeah.
No, that's interesting. Well, and that's, but I guess that could affect some of our departments. It's only really advantage to people that, you know, that's because of the cap, if you're, people that are making more money wouldn't necessarily do it necessarily, but people that, other people would maybe do it, so I just, just curious, that is from a.
Yeah.
I'd never heard this yet, so.
Um, the second piece to it is an Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, so, um, in addition to the FMLA, I should also say that, you know, point out that FMLA, um, you mentioned the school age children. It does also, um, is available for care for oneself or a family member, you know, due to illness related, so, um, I just put in a couple of, of the definitions here, but in reality, it, it is a little bit broader than that.
Parent or it could be a spouse or?
If, if someone in, um, a family member was ill related to this, you would have, you could take time under this as well. Um, the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act is, um, it, very similar in terms of the effective date. It says April 2nd here, but has actually been moved up to April 1st. Um, similar coverage, employee eligibility changes just a little bit, so we are creating two separate forms for this. Um, so that we have one, an application process for folks, um, seeking Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act or, um, Emergency FMLA. And this will provide essentially, it says two weeks of, um, paid leave, uh, regular rate of pay. Uh, however, there are some situations in which that would be lower than a regular rate of pay if you were caring for family members, um, et cetera. So there are some details in the law and we are working to, um, kind of implement those and look at how they react with our, either existing temporary policy and our existing, um, leave policies. Just a couple of other notes with the act. Um, it does require group health plan provisions to, um, provide coverage without any cost sharing, without any co-pays for access to certain testings for, um, related to COVID-19, to which we've already amended our health plan, um, to be in compliance with that.
Well, so could somebody use the emergency paid sick leave under item number five? Or, yeah, I guess under five for the first two weeks and then get, then do the next 10 weeks under the other act, so you could really do 12 weeks.
Yes.
Without taking your TML.
Correct.
Wouldn't FMLA be your TML or other paid time?
No, this is, this is in addition to, um, your TML.
Benefit.
So there is a top off provision that we are, uh, reviewing and a top off provision is where you could use your TML to, um, add to that, to bring yourself whole. So that is a component we are looking at as well, which is a standard practice on, um, services or benefits like this. And then just to note, the Oregon Family Leave Act was amended to also provide, um, protection for leave related to, um, school closure, however, it doesn't provide any additional pay. And those would run concurrently, the, um, uh, Oregon and FMLA.
This, these federal laws are significant, aren't they? They're very significant. A state, I don't know if all the states close their schools, I mean.
I know there's a lot of school closures. I don't know if all.
Yeah.
I don't know that answer.
I, you're correct. Right.
I have, I know a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, okay.
So, um, we will, this is, you know, no policy decisions, really just an update at this point. If we do run into, um, any areas in which we need guidance specifically, we will bring that to you as well as, um, as Tom mentioned, reviewing the temporary policy likely with either an amendment or an additional policy addressing, uh, this new act.
Well, that's, um, both of them have the with fewer than 500 employees. What about the people with more than 500 employees?
So there were some comments made by, um, the, I don't know exactly who, but the legislation about, um, employers larger than 500, um, should be providing these benefits anyway.
Already? Under the other family medical leave or something?
No, just, it's kind of a standard.
They aren't? That's interesting.
That's why they have the top 10 companies you want to work for.
I know, but it's, it's 12 weeks. It's three months because you're, I'm just, I've never heard about it before, so that's interesting. So you think it will have an impact on our employees or?
I imagine that there will be folks who will be accessing, uh, their, uh, leave eligibility under this for sure.
That wouldn't necessarily under TML.
Well, and they may, but they'll have a ability to access this.
Both, really. April 1st. Lot of head, a lot of, a lot of prep time.
That looks Thursday?
Is it Wednesday?
It's next Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday?
So we got one week.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you for the updates. Kathleen?
Okay, um, by the way, Sharon gave me a note that we need to start being careful again with what we say because Dave Doyle's back on the line.
Thank you very much.
So, uh, property taxes, Commissioner Dare, uh, had asked, uh, Greg Munn, um, to do some kind of checking on what options might be available to us with respect to the third and final property tax payment, um, that's coming up and, uh, I know that Greg has done that research. Greg, are you on the line now? Unless he's having mute button issues, uh, I don't think he is on the line, so we'll, maybe we'll track him down. I'll move on to the, can you try and get Greg? I'll skip down to United Way.
So I'm on, I'm on the lo.
Oh, there you are.
I'm on the phone. Hang on. Yeah, I was watching, I'm watching the video. Let me turn it down a second here. Oh, okay, I'm on.
So, uh, and, and I honestly, I don't remember if, uh, if Patty, if you copied Tony and Phil on your notes back and forth with Greg, but.
No, we need to discuss it the other day on our meeting.
So maybe I'll just ask Greg to kind of give you a rundown of, of where you are in your, uh, research on any flexibility we have with that third payment.
Okay, so the question, there were two questions. One was, do we have any flexibility in deferring property tax payments, specifically those that are coming up here in the third trimester that would be May? The answer is no, according to the ORS 305, we don't have that flexibility. It's written in the state law. It would be something that the state would need to do, not something that we have any flexibility in. The second question was regarding the ability to waive interest fees that would be assessed as part of late payments, late tax payments. Again, by state statute, we don't have the ability to waive those either. That's written into the ORS. I double-checked that with Dave Doyle to get his read on it, and he occurred with that conclusion.
Well, really, the, the third payment, you were talking about just delaying paying it, yeah. People can do that anyway, they just have to pay interest. So it's really just one question, is whether or not the interest to be, yeah.
And you're saying that we cannot waive the penalty if they pay at July 15th, unless-
That's correct.
Unless the legislature-
Changes it.
Changes that, you know, where they're doing all these things for this very special circumstance, so, okay.
That is correct.
Thank you for the research.
You're welcome.
Okay, and the final thing, as you may recall, a portion of your lottery fund proceeds is for what we call emergency food and shelter, about 75,000 of that annual allocation. And we work with United Way. They basically do that allocation on our behalf, because they go through a similar process with federal dollars that they get directly from the feds. So they run them concurrently and kind of pool the money together. That money doesn't come until later on, like in May, the money that they get directly from the feds. So Ken Wilhelm called the other day, and knowing that the need is now, he would like to go forward with the money that we have already provided him for this fiscal year and run a grant program now to get that money into the hands of people who need it. And then, you know, it's on them to actually run a second effort when the federal money comes in later on in May. So, again, the understanding has always been that they pull it, run it together, makes it efficient. We don't have to do it. They have knowledge and expertise on where need is in the community, so they combine those in a May event. So the question is just whether you would have any problem with them moving up, doing it twice, moving up with the money they have now, which is ours, that we've already given them for the FY '20, and, you know, and then decoupling the two and doing it later.
I don't have any problem. I was on the board. They have a board that they respond, you know. Two, I have a lot of confidence in Ken, so I'd be fine with it.
There's definitely the need.
I'm supportive.
Okay.
So it's unanimous?
Sounds like it.
So do we need a motion, then?
No, that's just, it's an administrative function.
All right.
Now, you all, for anything else that you'd like to bring up or discuss?
I have several. Should I start?
Yes, please.
Okay, Tony, can you hear me?
I've got a meeting at 2:30. I got a phone call at 2:30, but yes, I can hear you. I'm just letting you know, I may drop off and-
I'll start. A couple of things. I just wanted to bring you and Patty up to date with, I had a conversation with Congressman Walden this morning, and I specifically got ahold of him to see if he could kind of follow up with our conversation earlier this week with he in his office about, keep us up to date on what money the federal, or what supplies the federal government is sending to Oregon. And he, we talked about it some, and the issue is that we're not sure what's happening when it gets here, but that, we can find that out another way. He said, he's having a trouble finding it out from the OHA also, but he said he could provide us those information of what is coming from the national stockpile. So I'm looking, I'll follow up with Morgan and see if we can get kind of like daily or weekly, but he was, he was optimistic about that being able to be done. The second thing, I talked to him about, I said it would really be helpful now that they passed that big, he was on his way back to Washington today, that they're passing that, those bills, that if he could really do the summaries for us, and he said he'd been on the phone earlier today at the House Leadership, and that's what all of them are working on, is how do you explain this, what's available to, you know, businesses in every, you know, town in his district type of thing. So I'm kind of expecting them to help us with that. I said, well, if you can get us how this stuff works, we can help get it out in our communities, and he liked that idea. The third thing was, he did explain a little bit about how he thought the SBA loans were going to work, and he basically said that they would be, as far as he could tell, being possibly processed by the banks under a certain loan program that people would be able to file for a loan that would cover all sorts of things, you know, rent, utilities, staff, et cetera, and have some pretty really favorable terms. And he thought that was getting organized right now, too, and that would be available to businesses by basically going in and filing this at banks, and have really long terms of repayment. So it was good just to hear all of those things. Any, that was my first topic. Any questions, or?
No.
Okay.
Well, one of my thoughts is, yeah, there's a subset of businesses that are just, you know, going to be in the unknown territory for a while, you know, because even a loan could be the, you know, low probability of repaying it. So I'm just acknowledging there's a subset of businesses, and we're going to be transforming our economy here.
Yeah.
Pretty scary times.
And one thing, I've seen other people are suggesting that the state do things to save businesses and, and that the, you know, I've even had somebody talk to, that the county should do loans that become grants, et cetera. Oh, that's the other thing, I guess, is if you rehire, what he was saying is if you rehire people, or you, you know, other ways, these, kind of like our program, they turn from loans into grants. So it's, yeah, really, what's it?
Forgivable.
For forgivable, yeah. So that's, so that would be the part that would, kind of addressing what you were saying about that. So, so that was one, my first topic. Do you have anything, Tony? It's, you only have a few minutes.
Yeah, no, I'm not bringing anything to the meeting right now, just trying to make sure, communicating with folks, just like you, you know, we talked about the emails, just phone calls and emails, and that's the only plan right now.
Okay. Second thing I had was, I talked with JW over at Kovo, kind of following up our conversation with Monday with George and Nathan about motels and this sort of thing. And he was going to be checking with the people that he contacts out, you know, the homeless population that he works with, to see whether, you know, what, what parts of them might be interested in the housing component, because, he said not all of them would, and so he was going to do. And then he also gave an ask of things he specifically wanted, and I've, I passed that on to Nathan today. But our Colleen, I guess, is really working with Neighbor Impact and Kovo in charge of all this stuff, is what Nathan told me, and so that's good to know. A third thing I had that I thought we might want to consider is, you know, the city council, I don't know if they're going to continue to meet. Do you know, Tom?
Well, it depends on the council. I believe both Bend and Redmond have suspended their council.
Yeah. So one comment, you know, we're using this for a lot of informational thing. Would we ever want to do, you know, they have that TV slot, would we ever want to do that? Because we're passing on, I mean, a lot of what we're doing is kind of public interest, and we're talking like people are watching, but maybe we'd have more people be interested in watching if it was on TV for a limited period of time, and that'd be something we could think about. I mean, I, and I, but we wouldn't want to do it if all three of us didn't want to do it, but-
Wow.
So.
I can check into the logistics, just to see if that's possible.
Because people do watch.
I think there's a little, there's some, for a non-technical person, there are some, there might be some additional equipment we need to be able to transfer from live streaming on the web to actual TV, but I'll, we're happy to check into the-
I was just thinking, if we ever did, we could do a, we could restructure our meetings where we have kind of the informational part as a, you know, category, too, would be a possibility.
I do know that as there is, there is a, and if Dave's still on the line, he might be able to elaborate, there's a provision in our franchise agreement with TDS Baja, which has been broadband, that they allow for TV coverage. In other words, that they'll put that into their programming if we request it. So that, that, there is a clause in our franchise agreement with them on that, which I'll incorporate into what we check into.
Check it out. Real quick, Tony, before you leave, I don't know if either of you've talked to the sheriff about these, but Four Peaks Festival and the Sisters Rodeo, how are we going to deal, both of those are coming up, and are we involved in, I guess, did we talk about this Monday some, or not? I can't remember.
Well, no, I talked to the sheriff about it. He wanted us to extend our emergency declaration until the end of June, which would take in both of those activities.
Would, but are they different? I mean, one gets a permit from us, and the other gets, I don't think gets a permit, I don't know what the rodeo does.
The rodeo, that's built into their ongoing land use approval. They're built into that on the show there. Obviously, Four Peaks gets an annual permit from us.
So the Sisters Rodeo is ongoing? They don't have, with their permit, their original-
Yeah, it's covered in their existing ongoing land use permit.
But both of them are coming up in the period that a lot of things are being canceled, and there's people already have suggested we cancel the fair. So, did you guys have any thought, do you have any thoughts about it?
I don't want to cancel the fair, and I, today, March 25th, I don't want to cancel the rodeo either. I know they're aware, there's, you know, they're worried, but I would hate to cancel it. It is in June. We've got April and May, and hopefully by June, they'll be able to do it, you know.
But they'll probably have to decide.
I-
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Hi, it's Shane. Hey, the only thing I wanted to say, I had just mentioned the rodeo. I understand what Tom's saying about the permit. In my mind, the governor's executive order, the decision that came out, has no expiration on it. And then, as I shared this latest information with you, I'm sure you all know the Olympics has been postponed till at least 2021, and that wasn't supposed to take place until the end of summer. And I realize the Olympics are probably a lot harder to put on, but I just feel at this point, given those two directives, that was my reason for asking you to lengthen the declaration for emergency. I, look, I'm an optimistic thinker as well, but I think given all the information that we've all seen, this is not a situation that's going away anytime soon. And so I would just defer back to my earlier comments to the earlier meeting.
So-
Well, my thought is, this is not, not the week to be making that decision yet. You know, let's, let's step into this a little bit more before we dive into the choices like that.
What about facilitative conversations? I mean, Commissioner Dare, would you want to talk with people at the Sisters Rodeo about what they're thinking? They may already be thinking about this.
Oh, no, they already are. It was in the article last week on rodeos and how they've been canceled. And my nephew was interviewed for that, and what's happened to this whole group. And the Sisters Rodeo was written up in there. They don't really know what to do yet.
Well, do you want, but what I'm saying, go the next step, do you want to reach out to somebody at the Sisters Rodeo and see where they are beyond what was reported? I mean, would that-
Sure.
I'm willing to talk to, Shane had sent me the contact for the, what's it, Goff? The person that, the people at the Four Peaks, and ask what they're thinking. I might thought, is we at least find out what they're thinking.
I actually ran into their attorney the other day at, in Bend, and he said he was going to be calling us, and I just heard from him.
Well, do you mind if I-
No, that's fine.
Contact them and see what they're thinking currently, Howie Goff and, or Coff and Stacy, I think it's Stacy?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Does that sound good, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes, and I've communicated with both of them recently, but yeah, go ahead and make sure you know what they're thinking.
But you, do you know what, or maybe we can just connect on Monday to talk about what they're thinking. I'll do that, and then we can exchange notes.
Yep. Well, because it's changing, I mean-
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have to talk to them. Good.
Yeah, I'm going to step off.
Okay.
I'm going to step off for this call.
Okay.
Have a good day.
You, too.
(noise)
That's all I, those are my four things that I had. Under BOC, other items.
All right.
Hey, everyone, this is Shane. I appreciate your time. I'm going to go ahead and get off as well.
Good afternoon.
Hey, thank you. Do you have anything else?
Um, no. I think I've done wearing my gloves now.
You can't take them off till you can go wash your hands.
Oh, brother. These are surgery gloves. I should be fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right. No, I, okay, I'll talk to the Sisters Rodeo people and see what they say. I, it's June, what is it, the 10th to the 14th, I believe? I've driven by the sign enough times.
Isn't it earlier than, maybe that's-
No, it's June 10th.
Well, I'm not advocating, I'm just, it is something they're probably wondering, too.
No, they're not wondering, they're worrying if they're going to have to cancel it or not. So it's been really impactful, and, you know.
Well, that's a good point. It's really out of our hands, wouldn't it be, in terms of, as long as the governor's order stays in place, they have to comply with that.
Yeah, I don't know that there's anything that we can do from a land use perspective to stop it if we wanted to, but whether we have that authority under the emergency declaration, maybe something different, and I'd have to defer to Dave on that analysis.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I can't think of anything else I wanted to say today.
Me neither.
But I want to thank all the people that have been helping us stay current, the staff. I mean, it's been overwhelming how great our team is, and I so appreciate the people that have stepped in. I actually called Tracy yesterday, I thought it was her last day yesterday, and apparently it's not till next Tuesday. So they immediately answered the phone at the fairgrounds. It was really nice to know that people are trying to maintain as best we can. So thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I'll pass that on. I'm sure people would love it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it is, we have such a great team, and, you know, I just hope we can all get through this, and have a party to celebrate when it's over, right? Can we do that? I'll make the biscuits. Sharon will help me. Are we having an executive session today? Because remember, we had the Overton-
Yeah.
We are going to do that. Okay.
Obviously, we lost Tony, but, so I guess it would depend on what, if you're interested in having a discussion on that, or if you-
Well, we postponed it till today, so I think we should do that.
Okay, great.
So then we need to end our meeting as such?
Well, you just go, go into executive session.
But we're not-
Can we turn off the TV?
Yes.
Probably want to get Dave-
Dave has to be on.
But make sure it's not on the open line that he's-
Right.
Dave, are you still there?
Ah, yes, I'm still here.